Good morning, everybody. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is April 2nd. This is a Lake County Board of Supervisors regular meeting, and we're going to begin with a moment of silence. I just learned recently that one of our past mayors from the city of Clear Lake, also a past law enforcement officer, Nick Bennett, passed away. He did move out of the area, but he is well-recognized in the impact that he made to our community. He started out his law enforcement career in East Palo Alto, where in the 90s, he had some very interesting stories of the crime that he had to deal with. Came here to Clear Lake, continued his career in law enforcement, and eventually, after retirement, became a council member and retired as the mayor of the city of Clear Lake. He was with his wife, and his wife was also providing daycare services over in the city of Clear Lake, which is amazing to have, and want to make sure that he is remembered and his family is in our hearts as we have a moment of silence today. Supervisor Pyska, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, are there any extra items to be added?
There are no extra items.
All right, and nothing from board members either? Okay. Then we'll go through the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled by board members? And seeing none, and I apologize, I did not open up Zoom yet. I'll go ahead and start on that. But is there anybody in the public that wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda? Please raise your hand or come up to the microphone. And seeing none, checking in with Johanna. Do we have anybody on Zoom with their hands raised? Okay, let's go ahead and see if they want to pull an item.
I was hoping I could just make a public comment for under three minutes.
We will do public comment next after we are done with our consent agenda, so please hang on tight. We'll get to you. All right, and seeing no further hands, let's go ahead and bring them back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.20.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Impose, and motion carries. Let's go ahead and move on to our public comment item. Item 6.2, 6.1, 9:02 a.m., public input. Let's go ahead and start with the water solutions since we've already activated.
Thank you, guys.
And you'll have up to three minutes.
Perfect. My name is Ben Hittle. I teach robotics in Middletown and was teaching solar and sustainable construction at Mendocino College and would like to bring some of that energy to our county. Jessica knows me as somebody who tried to do a 3D printer for houses back after the Valley Fire, and I would strongly, after seeing the general plan go through and the climate action plan and everything all at once, kind of want to work our way toward gratitude in our tireless effort to making our, you know, community better. But as a robotics teacher and instructor of sustainable construction and solar technology at Mendocino College, I came, I come here with a simply, a simple solution that could be implemented potentially in our community with the general and area plans. Because we have issues with waste management and are trying to transition to a zero-waste circular economy, I would like to propose that we implement a glass and tire recycling initiative utilizing these materials as a road base. And I know it's a little bit far off, but we are looking at long-term planning, and by utilizing 20% tires, 25% glass, and other crushed concrete, we can redo our roads pretty cheaply in the county. And I know it's, again, a big thing, but roads are a big thing. And the other part I'd like to end on, in addition to establishing a circular economy, improving our road infrastructure, I'd like to propose that we take some of our money for the homelessness initiatives and mental health initiatives and get ourselves a 3D printer and start some more technological education with our county employees and taking on the initiative to get the housing issue dealt with ourselves. And at this point in time, I'd like to finish up saying that we can get a 3D house printer for under $50,000. So we could literally buy 10 of these for $500,000, and the homelessness money we have right now is $2.8 million. So that'd still leave us $2.4 million to help tackle homelessness with 10 3D printers to build houses. So I know this is just a start. I am available. I would like to be working with you guys more and more and have other organizations that would like to work with you as well. And thank you guys so much for your time and hard work.
Thank you for your comment. Please make sure to reach out to the supervisor in which district you reside, and I'm sure that those conversations can continue as well. And look out for the area planning committees that will be discussing as well. Please get involved in those. Thank you very much. I see no further hands up in Zoom. Are there public comments in the chamber? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close that item and move on to pet of the week. We have Officer Kopus with a very small animal.
Hi, my name's Officer Kopus with Lake County Animal Care Control. Today, I have brought about a one-year-old Italian Shepherd mix. His name's Dex. He's in Countel 27. He does good with other dogs, a large breed. We haven't really tested with small breeds yet. He likes to shake hands with both paws, not just one. He does know how to sit. He will go good with any home with a little bit of extra training and, of course, some brushing, as you can see. He needs a little bit. If you'd like to see him or adopt him or any of our other adoptables, we are at 4949 Hellbush Drive in Lakeport behind the county jail. Or if you have questions regarding anybody, you guys can give us a call at 707-263-0278. And we also have three pot-bellied pigs still looking for homes.
Thank you so much. Good luck, Dex. All right, we're going to move on.
Can I make a comment real quick? I know she already left, but I wanted to ensure that the public knows about adopting. We've had two successful adoptions within the last month. And one thing I wanted to highlight, I was talking to our advisory committee, one of the advisory committee representatives, and it's, it's, some of these puppies, if you will, they are in dire need of being adopted. And what happens is if animal control is out tending to a complaint of a vicious dog or something of the like, they're obligated to take them to the shelter and put them in an actual, I guess, cell or whatever you want to call it. And then these dogs, if they're not adopted, are usually euthanized. So it's a sad situation, and that's kind of the, the, like, that's the responsibility by law to do so. So I just wanted to make sure people knew that so that maybe they can adopt some puppies and dogs and, and just consider that because it's sad that they have to be the, the dogs that are actually put down. But by law, they're obligated to deal with these vicious dogs. So just wanted to highlight that and make sure people knew.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 6.3, our 9:05 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation commending Christine Smith for her 23 years of service to the county of Lake. And Supervisor Simon will handle that proclamation. And please come on up. I believe we have the entire department here.
Good morning. Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation commending Christine Smith for her 23 years of service to the county of Lake. Whereas Christine Smith began service with the county of Lake as a child support officer in January of 2001, and whereas Christine promoted to a child support special programs coordinator in May of 2005, and whereas Christine promoted to an information system analyst October 2012, and whereas Christine has excelled in each and every position she has held with the Lake County Department of Child Support Services. She has shown efficient and exemplary work habits and ability to accomplish an incredible amount of work. And whereas Christine has been described as knowledgeable, robust, friendly, outgoing, and a hard worker, and whereas after dedicating 23 years of service to the county of Lake, or Lake County and the Department of Child Support Services, she retired on March 4th, 2024. And whereas Christine was a valuable member of the Department of Child Support Services, and she'll be deeply missed by all of us. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the county of Lake does hereby commend Christine Smith for her 23 years of outstanding and dedicated service to the county of Lake and the Department of Child Support Services. And we wish her good health and happiness during her retirement, which is well-earned. Passed and adopted this second day of April 2024 and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Espatier, and also Susan Parker, Clerk to the Board. Thank you very much for your service.
Never one without words. I wanted to take this time to say how deeply honored and privileged I was to work for this county for 23 years. I want to acknowledge my management team, who basically got me through from one step to the next and offered me support in anything I needed to continue to do my job. I appreciate all of my, my fellow coworkers. And, boy, did you guys keep me hopping at a time when I could hop. It really was an honor and a privilege to work for this county and to feel like I made a difference. So I love you guys, all of you. Thank you. And on to not having to get up with the alarm clock anymore. Thank you.
Christine, I'm going to do my best not to cry. Okay, well, we're going to miss, we're going to miss you very much. A lot of knowledge out the door. Cindy, Cindy and I are really going to miss you. I know everyone here is going to miss you, and we just wish you well.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Cindy, you want to say something?
Yes, you will be greatly missed, but no more password resets, so.
Thank goodness.
And we appreciate everything you've done for the department and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to say anything?
Board members?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and start. I want to thank you for your dedication to serving the community and obviously, your dedication and loyalty to your department. That's 23 years in the same department, which I think speaks loudly of the camaraderie and support that occurs within that department. Thank you so much for dedicating so many years of your life to serving our communities and making all of our community members have what they need in order to move forward in their lives. So really appreciate it. Hope you enjoy your retirement. It's well-deserved.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else wants to say anything at this point?
Very good, then. Don't keep me up by a microphone.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your service. Obviously, child support service is such an important job that's done here in Lake County, and the whole department does an exemplary job. So one more thing, just want to say thank you for everything that you do and really enjoy your retirement. Well-deserved. Thank you.
And thank you for all coming and sharing your support. So our next item, we're going to move on to item 6.4, our 9:10 a.m. Presentation of proclamation designated in the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. And Supervisor Pyska will take care of this. Please come on up. Katie's becoming like a fixture of the, like, three weeks in a row.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, proclamation designating the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County. Whereas in 2023, Lake County agencies responded to the needs of 390 sexual assault victims and their significant others and/or family members. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, and the partnership between public and private Lake County agencies is invaluable. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that children are being abused. One in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas Lake Family Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in the county of Lake in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services, continuing support, advocacy, and accompaniment to victim and survivors and their significant others. And whereas ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. It is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all residents. And whereas staff and volunteers of the Lake Family Resource Center Rape Crisis Center work year-round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention education and survivor empowerment information. And whereas Lake County, Lake Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, law, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set an important example of how forgetting, I'm sorry, forging collaborative relationships improves the quality of service for those impacted by sexual violence. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the county of Lake does hereby designate the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Lake County and urges all local government, schools, businesses, and community members to participate in the sponsored events this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free from violence and exploitation. Passed and adopted this second day of April 2024.
Thank you very much. There's a couple of things that I just wanted to talk about, some of the events that we have planned this month. First, I want to thank the board for proclaiming Sexual Assault Awareness Month for the month of April. Some of the events that we have is, today is Day of Action. It's the first Tuesday in April. Day is, Day of Action is nationally acknowledged. It's an event to kick off Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And we wear the color teal today to support survivors of sexual assault. On April 18th, we'll have a booth, oh, sorry. Slow down here. On April 18th, we'll have a booth at Woodland Community College for Earth Day, and we'll be spreading awareness and resources there. April 25th is Denim Day. Denim Day originated in 1990. There was an 18-year-old who went on her first driving, driving instructor, and he sexually assaulted her. She went home, told her parents. He was convicted of sexual assault. He then appealed it, and it went to the Supreme Court, and it was overturned because the judge had said that her jeans were too tight, so therefore, that she had to help him, so it's not considered rape. So ever since then, the last Wednesday of every April, we celebrate Denim Day to show support for that survivor. Our local law enforcement agencies are putting teal ribbons all on their vehicles to show support for survivors. And then we have made coffee sleeves for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And Jitter Bean and Suzie Q's Donuts have agreed to put them on their coffees, so I wanted to give a special thank you to them. And then I just kind of want to go over a little bit of statistics. Statistics. The Rape Crisis Center served 62 clients last year. The youngest was three years old, and the oldest was 72. So sexual assault does not discriminate. We provided 12 clients emergency safe housing with over 400 bed nights of safety. We responded to 124 crisis interventions, and we provided over 1,900 direct services to those 62 clients. A little bit about our services. Our services are free and confidential. It could have happened 30 years ago, or yesterday, we will still serve that client. We provide advocacy, accompaniment, crisis counseling, transportation, and emergency temporary housing. And then we have our 24 crisis, 24-hour, 24/7 crisis line. So we always have somebody on call, either it be in the evening, on weekends, Easter, Thanksgiving, could be at 2:00 in the morning or 5:00 in the morning. And a lot of these ladies that I work with are out there doing this work, and I just want to give a special thank you to them. Thank you.
Anyone from District Attorney's Office?
My name's Rich Watson, and I'm a deputy district attorney at the DA's office. I work for Susan Cronus at the DA's office, and I specialize in prosecuting sex crimes. And I just want to give a shout-out to our victim witness advocates and along with LFRC. But I know that my job, I, I tell them all the time that Susan and I could not be successful in prosecuting these cases if it wasn't for our advocates. They empower the victims, they, they build rapport with them, and they get them able to tell their story. And it's, it's potentially the most crucial part of successful prosecution is our advocate team. So I just always want to give them that and let them know how much we appreciate it.
Well, I want to thank you all for your service. This is very difficult work, but it's important work, and it's critical for the health and safety for everybody that lives in our county. So thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment.
I thought, no, I'm not going to stand up this time because it's scary, and I did it a few years ago. But it's a Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. One of the cool things about working as a planner is like I can drive through the community and be like, ooh, I helped with that thing, and I helped with that thing. And, and as I think about what this team together does every single day, I just really hope that as you're driving around the community, you feel that, what I felt times like a gazillion, because there are families that are growing up healthy because of you. There are women who are reclaiming their lives because of you. So, thank you.
So next on our list is our 9:15 a.m. item. Presentation of proclamation appointing Brenda Jaeger as Lake County Poet Laureate for the years 24-26. And I'll read the next item as well, which is presentation of proclamation designated in April 2024 as Poetry Month in Lake County. And if I can please get the poet laureate, the previous poet laureate, and anyone involved in literacy, please come on up. That would be you, Pamela.
You'd get a better picture if you're up here.
So today, we are doing a proclamation, appointing Brenda Marie, I believe, Jaeger, as Lake County Poet Laureate for the years 24-26. Whereas the county of Lake recognizes the contributions of poetry and the arts for enriching the literary and cultural attributes of society. And whereas the county of Lake acknowledges the relationship between poetry and political freedom and the exercise of free speech in forms recognizable by people all over the world. And whereas the county of Lake recognizes that poetry represents one of the most enduring forms of expression and contributes to the historical continuity of civilization. And whereas the function of the poet laureate is to encourage poetry and writing among Lake County residents by stimulating literacy and creativity in spoken and written form. And whereas the poet laureate of Lake County is designated to represent the Board of Supervisors at civic and cultural events. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of the county of Lake does hereby appoint Brenda Jaeger as the Lake County Poet Laureate for the years 2024 through 2026, passed and adopted this second day of April 2024. Congratulations, Brenda.
Thank you so much to the Board of Supervisors and everyone in Lake County for recognizing the incredible gift of poetry to the human family. And I will do everything I can to bring the very tender heart of poetry to everyone in this county, that every voice can be heard and lifted up as we enter a time in the county's history of hearing each other and acknowledging each other. And it is the way forward. And I know you all are doing so much work for that. And thank you for your, for your work and service. And in that light, I wanted to read one poem, a short one, by Joy Harjo, who was the National Poet Laureate. And this poem is entitled, "This Morning I Pray For My Enemies", by Joy Harjo. And whom do I call my enemy? to be a continued tradition here in Lake County. So thank you so much for stepping up, and congratulations on being appointed.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Or let me do the other one, because you're not going anywhere.
I'll say something.
Okay, please, please. I figured you would. So I want to read this in appreciation of all past and future poet laureates of Lake County. Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2024 as Poetry Month in Lake County. Whereas National Poetry Month was launched by the Academy of American Poets in April 1996 to celebrate the integral role of poets in our culture and that poetry matters. And whereas National Poetry Month has become the largest literacy celebration in the world with tens of millions of readers, students, K-12 teachers, librarians, booksellers, literary event curators, publishers, families, and poets marking poetry's important place in our lives. And whereas the County of Lake recognizes the contributions of poetry and literary arts for enriching the literary and cultural attributes of society. And whereas the County of Lake acknowledges the relationship between poetry and political freedom and the exercise of free speech in forms recognizable by people all over the world. And whereas the County of Lake recognizes that poetry represents one of the most enduring forms of expression and contributes to the historical continuity of civilization. And now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake does hereby designate the month of April 2024 as Poetry Month in Lake County, passed and adopted this second day of April 2024, and signed by myself and of course the board. I am going to put Brenda on the spot, and we've seen this before from Georgina. We invite you to come and read poetry. It doesn't have to necessarily be the month of April, but I think the more we see you, the more people can recognize you and also recognize the importance of poetry and the arts in our community. So please come back often.
I would love to, thank you. Georgina's ending her term as poet, four years as poet laureate, and she has done-- Georgina Marie Guardado has been our poet laureate for the last four years, from 2020 to 2024, and has done an amazing job of creating a rich and lively literary community here, bringing poetry to so many people in our county, creating so many opportunities for poetry to be heard and shared, and for people to come together and start writing together and using poetry as a way to heal and to create culture. And it's been such a beautiful thing to watch what you've done for all of us and your service. So please, whatever you need to say.
Thank you. There's one last lady of teal I noticed in the audience, and I just wanted to take a quick moment in honor of Sexual Assault Awareness Month to say that last year I had to reach out to the hotline, the crisis myself, the crisis chat line, and I received the help I needed. So thank you for all the work that you do. It's been an interesting four years of serving as poet laureate during a global pandemic, so thank you to the community for accepting poetry and for the Board of Supervisors for consistently supporting it as well. I just wanted to read a quote in honor of National Poetry Month by Jeanette Winterson. She's an English author. So when people say that poetry is a luxury or an option, or for the educated middle classes, or that it shouldn't be read at school because it is irrelevant, or any of the strange and stupid things that are said about poetry and its place in our lives, I suspect that the people doing the saying have had things pretty easy. A tough life needs a tough language, and that is what poetry is. That is what literature offers, a language powerful enough to say how it is. It isn't a hiding place, it is a finding place. Poetry has helped so many of us through the pandemic, and I'm really excited to have Brenda represent poetry in Lake County for the next two years. And also thank you for Richard Schmidt for being here. He was the poet laureate from 2018 to 2020.
Richard's our poetry dad, so he had to be here. I also just wanted to invite everyone for National Poetry Month this year. Lake County will participate for the first time in Poem in Your Pocket Day, and I see there's a beautiful conjunction happening that it's actually the Academy of American Poets has chosen April 18th, 2024, as Poem in Your Pocket Day. You'll be able to get poetry scrolls with a little poem, you can take it home with you, read it to someone on Zoom, take a photo of it, post it on social media. It's a way to share the beauty of poetry with everyone. They'll be in the libraries and in businesses, coffee shops and so on that you'll get with your coffee on that day. So there'll also be a reading of our local, beautiful local voices at the Lakeport Library. And this year, for the first time, we will have a youth reading of youth poetry at the Soper Reese Theater. So all those events will be posted on Facebook, and press releases will be going out. Please come and support the youth who are speaking their truth to us all here in Lake County. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to move on to item 6.7, our 9:25 a.m. item, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Week of April 1st through 7th, 2024, as Public Health Week. And Vice Chair Crandall is going to handle this one. And I see we have some public health members in the back, if you would like to make your way to the front.
It was loose. All right, so I'll go ahead and read this proclamation Designating the Week of April 1st through 7th, 2024, as National Public Health Week in Lake County. Whereas the theme for National Public Health Week in 2024 is protecting, connecting, and thriving. We are all public health. And whereas the goal of National Public Health Week in 2024 is to recognize the contributions of public health in improving the health of the people of the United States and achieving health equity. And whereas County of Lake Health Services seeks to promote policies, systems, and services that enable good health and to remove obstacles and systemic and structural barriers such as poverty, racism, gender discrimination, and other forms of oppression that have resulted in health inequities. And whereas County of Lake Health Services recognizes and seeks to address the health disparities experienced by rural communities as a whole, and especially highlights the following groups: tribal populations, Latinx populations, populations living in poverty, aging populations, those who are geographically isolated, and those who are experiencing substance use or mental health issues. And whereas the Administration Division improves the health of Lake County by enabling each program under the Health Services Department to function in their purpose of promoting and protecting the well-being of local residents. And whereas the Environmental Health Division improves the health of Lake County through education and encouraging compliance with public health laws and ensuring safety standards are met. And whereas the Public Health Division improves local health outcomes by providing information, resources, access, and services to Lake County community members. And whereas Public Health Week also recognizes the partnership and service of local public and private agencies, foundations, community partners, academia, and health-related enterprises that are working in collaboration to promote healthy behaviors and bolster the Health Services Department efforts in improving the health outcomes of Lake County residents. And whereas through the lens of the social determinants of health, healthcare access and quality, neighborhood and built environment, social and community context, economic stability and education access and quality, Public Health Week seeks to impress upon all that every Lake County community member contributes to the health of one another. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of Lake County do hereby recognize April 1st through 7th, 2024, as National Public Health Week in Lake County, passed and adopted this second day of April 2024. Signed, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Bruno Sabatier.
I just want to thank the board for recognizing this week, and on behalf of the Administrative Division, the Environmental Health Division, and the Public Health Division, and all of the dedicated staff, we thank you.
There's no one from the public. I guess it's time for pictures.
Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of April 2024 as Celebrate Diversity Month. And all of those who wish to join in the celebration of diversity and the proclamation, please come on up. We invite everyone.
Come on, don't be shy, we're all diverse. Are we not diverse?
Thank you Supervisor Green for taking this.
Don't leave me up here hanging by myself. This is a proclamation Designating April 2024 as Celebrate Diversity Month, with a typo in it, so we're going to fix that. Whereas Celebrate Diversity Month has been observed each April since 2004, honoring the rich tapestry of contributions woven by individuals of every gender, race, ethnicity, faith, sexual orientation, gender identity, and ability, among a multitude of distinguishing factors, and recognizing that intersectionality lends further dimension to diverse individuals and communities. And whereas appreciating diversity encourages inclusivity and creates a more welcoming environment for people from all backgrounds and circumstances. And whereas celebrating diversity promotes understanding and tolerance, and by learning about different cultures and experiences, individuals can gain greater understanding of the challenges and struggles faced by people from different backgrounds. And whereas embracing diversity helps combat discrimination, racism, and other constructs that seed division by creating awareness of the importance of accepting and valuing people from differing backgrounds. And whereas when people celebrate their differences and are open to diversity, common stereotypes are challenged, promoting a more nuanced and complex understanding of different cultures and backgrounds, and they can highlight the diversity within different communities, showcasing unique and underappreciated strengths and talents. And whereas the richly diverse cultures of Lake County's seven tribal nations, Middletown Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, Coy Nation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Habemotol Pomo of Upper Lake, Robinson Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, and Aleum Indian Colony greatly enhance every facet of life in our communities. And whereas by bringing people from different backgrounds and experiences together, diversity fosters creativity and innovation, leading to new ideas, perspectives, and solutions to problems, and I would dare say leadership if I am looking at the people on the dais here with me. And whereas celebrating diversity enhances personal growth and encourages greater empathy and compassion for others. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake recognizes the month of April 2024 as Celebrate Diversity Month, passed and adopted this second day of April. Michael, thank you for bringing this forward, and I was glad to contribute to some of this and co-sponsor it as well. And in the light of this proclamation, just knowing that once we start working on things together, common ground, establishing common ground, and just respecting one another, I think is very important, and I think we're getting closer to that day by day, and small steps at a time, and we'll be able to move forward in the light of diversity and inclusion with everybody. So. Everybody else have any diverse words? I'm just proud to see everyone here. Some words?
I'm Raven Shepherd, I'm Native American. I've been, I lived here all my life, so I'm like 41, so I've lived here for 41 years of my life, and I've never felt so included in my life as I have been the last nine years or 10 years of my life. I am glad that we have leaders, diverse leaders, and I really think that we're going to bring a lot of inclusion to our county, and I think that you guys have laid down the groundwork for that for me, so thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say a quick word. As most of us on this stage here know, diversity can be a trigger word for a lot of people in the public, so I just encourage folks to embrace it. I've had the pleasure of being part of the community visioning forum for the county with Michael and EJ and a couple of others that are here in the crowd as well. I just wanted to give a little bit of a nod to the Board of Supervisors. I think for the first time since I've grown up here, it's the most diverse board that I've seen. So thank you all for the work that you're doing as well.
I want to thank Georgina and everyone who did work with us on the visioning forum. You're right, these can be challenging times, and as much as we celebrate diversity, we also have to take and acknowledge some of the many challenges, both locally and in our national dialogue involving diversity and how we accelerate it, and why there might be some people eager and pushing back against that. I'm very grateful for the growth I've been able to tiptoe towards, but it's also exposed just how some difficult that work is. So for those who may be new to diversity, equity, inclusion as concepts, myself included, this is good work to have, and any moments of occasional discomfort you may have going down this pathway, you will be rewarded 10 times and 100 times with a new appreciation of your colleagues here in this county. So thank you for everyone who stood up here today. Anyone from the board? I want to thank Leila Romero for bringing this to us. I know that's something that she brought to my attention, that she wanted to put this on the agenda. I want to thank you for that. The idea of celebrating diversity is also, in a way, it's an act of humility. We need to be willing to listen, whether it's a person who is homeless or a person of affluence, a person who's disabled or abled, somebody who is a person of color or not a person of color. We all need to listen to one another because--
I've seen, so thank you all for the work that you're doing as well.
And I want to thank Georgina and everyone who did work with us on the visioning forum. You're right, these can be challenging times, and as much as we celebrate diversity, we also have to take and acknowledge some of the many challenges both locally and in our national dialogue involving diversity and how we accelerate it and why there might be some people eager and pushing back against that. I'm very grateful for the growth I've been able to tiptoe towards, but it's also exposed just how some difficult that work is. So for those who may be new to diversity, equity, inclusion as concepts, myself included, this is good work to have, and any moments of occasional discomfort you may have going down this pathway, you will be rewarded 10 times and 100 times with a new appreciation of your colleagues here in this county. So thank you for everyone who stood up here today. Anyone from the Board?
I want to thank Leila Romero for bringing this to us. I know that's something that she brought to my attention, that she wanted to put this on the agenda, I want to thank you for that. The idea of celebrating diversity is also, in a way, it's an act of humility. We need to be willing to listen, whether it's a person who is homeless or a person of affluence, a person who's disabled or abled, somebody who is a person of color or not a person of color. We all need to listen to one another because we can learn from one another, and by learning we can all do much better for our communities. And that's what to me diversity brings, is just the ability to make the best of what we have in our community rather than limiting ourselves to what we think is right. It's about hearing everyone else's expression of concern and expression of what the solutions could be. And so I think we have taken great steps, especially when we started the visioning forum. I think that was a very methodical, focused, and forced step to take, but sometimes we need to take those four steps because it doesn't come very naturally. Status quo remains rather than actually breaking the mold, so I'm really thankful for all the work that we've done and thankful for this proclamation.
Texting my people, she got people now.
I need the seal, not just a Xerox copy. All right, thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead and maybe take a quick five-minute break and then come back so that we can reconvene at 9:58.
You have to like prepare like the...
All right, let's go ahead and reconvene the meeting, please.
Then you're in a minute.
We're going to move on to item 6.9, our 9:30 a.m. item, Presentation of Update on 2024 Drought Conditions and Drought-Related Projects, and we have our Water Resources Team with us. We have Mr. Breedlove and Ms. DePaul Madal.
All right, good morning, Board. I'm Mitchell Breedlove, I'm here with Angela DePaul Madal, we're with the Water Resource Department, and we were asked to bring forth a drought update presentation, so that's what we will be doing today. I think we need to share our screen.
Do I have to share? Oh, this one?
All right, perfect. Okay, today's talking points, we're going to be talking about state and local drought status, the current Clear Lake lake levels, state drought declarations, a reminder about Senate Bill 552, water resources drought-related activities, and county drought-related activities, and next steps. All right, on this screen we have California's current drought map and Lake County drought outlook. As you can see on the map on the left, there, we, most of the county is in white and the northern region is in green considering wet conditions. And currently, zero people in Lake County are affected by drought. There was no change in the past week or month. Zero percent of people in Lake County are affected by the drought as well. And this past February was the 21st wettest February on record over the past 130 years, and that was a 5.58 inches increase compared to the normal. And this is the 25th, 25th wettest year to date over the past 130 years. That's an increase of 6.78 inches. Next slide, please. On this slide we have a photo, this is at Vector Control in Lakeport, and this is where the gauge for the lake is. On the left you can see in July of 2021 how low it was, and the gauge actually had to be moved that year to the Fitch Street ramp because it was not, no longer in the water. It was moved back, Angela, when was that moved back? Do you know?
When we got water.
On the right we have January 2024, and this is how it's looking now. I'll hand it over to Angela.
Great, thank you. So this is the data from that lake gauge that's there at Vector Control and was temporarily moved, and you can see what this graph is showing along the bottom. The x-axis is the time period, so we have it starting in January 1st, 2020, and then it goes until March 25th, I put it up there for today. And the top red mark is the full lake, so that's about 7.56. So you can see right now, the blue line all the way to the right top is above a full lake, and we've actually been on kind of a monitor flood stage the last month or two because it's been hovering around eight feet on the Rumsey gauge. You can see the bottom red is the lake, low lake levels, and those were reached in 2021, which is that bottom around, on the left side, and then the slightly lower was the 2022 low water level. So compared to 2020, our lake is at the highest here. We don't know obviously what summer will have and what the next few years wet season will have, but we are above full right now. And this is the executive order by Governor Newsom, and so this is the most recent drought executive order, N-5, N-523, and this was made in March 24th of last year, 2023, and it basically kind of relaxed and terminated some previous drought proclamations and orders and kind of consolidated everything because the drought proclamations rolled out as conditions kind of changed and got drier and issues came up. And what I did here was highlight the specific language if it applied to the Clear Lake watersheds, which is where we are. So the first whereas just talks about improved conditions have helped to rehabilitate surface water supplies, but have not abated severe drought conditions that do remain some parts of the state. Again, this was last year, 2023. And then there's a bunch of other whereas, but the other, the next one that applied to us was the whereas continued action by the state is needed to address ongoing consequences of the drought emergency, including groundwater supply shortages, domestic well failures, and drought-related harm to native fishes in the Klamath River and Clear Lake watersheds. And if anybody wants to access this executive order, I've put the address at the bottom. Further on in the executive order is this item 9, and this is where Governor Newsom talks about specific paragraphs that are updated with this language, and I've done the same thing here, highlighted and read the areas that impact the Clear Lake watershed. So basically, to ensure critical in-stream flows for species protection in the Klamath River and Clear Lake watershed, it states that the Water Resource Control Board, Department of Fish and Wildlife, can evaluate minimum in-stream flows and other actions needed to protect salmon and steelhead, specifically calls out the Clear Lake Hitch and other native fishes and critical stream systems in these watersheds. And then identifies working with water users, tribes, and other parties on voluntary measures to implement these actions, and that is what happened here in the Clear Lake watershed, there was voluntary action call. And then further in this language here, it says to the extent voluntary actions are not sufficient, the Water Board in coordination with CDFW can consider emergency regulations to establish minimum in-stream flows to mitigate the effects of drought conditions. And so this is basically identifying specifically that some of the drought provisions and protections are in place, remain in Klamath and Clear Lake watersheds specifically to improve flows in the streams for Clear Lake Hitch and other native fishes. And so this is still a current executive order from Gavin Newsom.
All right, on this slide we have our groundwater conditions and wells. Unfortunately, Environmental Health was unable to be here to help present this specific slide, but according to the statewide distribution of dry wells, which can be found at the link at the top, there have been no dry wells reported in the county over the past year. And as far as conditions within our Big Valley and Scotts Valley basin that we monitor monthly, we have seen a few artesianium wells in the area, and the groundwater storage is very high up in comparison to previous years. And next week we will be conducting our countywide biannual well run for our spring levels, so we will have a better understanding of how it looks exactly next week within our other basins. Next slide, please. So this slide is talking about the Senate Bill 552. Senate Bill 552, otherwise known as SB 552, was passed and signed by Governor Gavin Newsom in September of 2021, and it required state and local governments to share the responsibility in preparing and acting in the case of a water shortage event. These new requirements are expected to improve the ability of Californians to manage future droughts and help prevent catastrophic impacts on drinking water for communities, vulnerable to impacts of climate change. And on this slide you can see a number of bullet points that highlight what these plans need to consider, and it's developing a risk mitigation plan, talking about potential drought and water shortage risk, and it proposes interim and long-term solutions for state smalls and domestic wells in the county, and this is just on the county portion of what is required. Larger water purveyors have a different requirement to follow. The plan must consider at the following, a minimum of consolidation for existing water systems and domestic wells, domestic well drinking water mitigation programs, provision of emergency and interim drinking water solutions, and analysis of the steps necessary to implement the plan, and analysis of local, state, federal funding sources available to implement the plan. Next slide, please.
I'll just define too that state smalls is a system that has 14 connections or less.
Thank you. On this slide we have what water resources activities are currently going on in progress, and our first point here is we have Department of Water Resources Support Services through the California Drought Resiliency Plan Assistance Program, and this provided through their consultant Stantec, and that began last month in March, and it's continuing for one year, and this is helping to facilitate the Lake County Drought Task Force, which was created in 2021. However, there have not been many meetings recent years due to some facility turnover and employee turnover that will be getting going again, and this assistance is also drafting the drought mitigation plan. Our second point here is that we will be submitting an application through the countywide and regional water funding program, and this is a plan that will provide short and long-term solutions to water shortages and drought planning and response, and this will require cross-departmental collaboration to share resources and workload. It's a very large grant, and I plan to bring the presentation to the Board to seek approval before we submit the final application. And then our third point is that we received funding to improve in-stream hitch habitat, to modify reservoir storage and operation to increase Big Valley surface flows and groundwater recharge, and we are developing stormwater plans for stormwater capture and reuse. Next slide, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mitchell. For item four, that's developing stormwater plans, if we want to be eligible for any future bond funding, so there is talks of a water bond going before the boaters, if we want to be eligible as Lake County or the Watershed Protection District get any of those funds, we're required to have a stormwater resources management plan, and we're developing that plan right now. We were not eligible for some Prop 1 funds because we didn't get that plan in place because during the time of the planned funding, it was during the valley fire, so we missed out on that opportunity, but we're planning ahead to be able to be eligible for those water bond funds in the future. So what I did was, in response to preparing for this presentation, is reached out to other departments to identify what their direct impacts would be on funding if the local drought emergency proclamation was removed. And so I talked to special districts, Scott Harder, he identified that there was no impacts, that they have state funding and that's still in effect based on their, they have a drought plan in place. The Department of Ag, I talked to the director Catherine Vanderwall, she has no direct projects tied to local proclamation. Community development planning, I talked to Maria Turner. There are requirements to include hydrology reports for projects, but because their department authority has those, they're going to continue to do those checks for those hydrology reports and receive those requirements. And I know Maria Turner is here in the room, if she has any comments on that after our presentation. We also reached out to Greg at Environmental Health, the director over there, and he says that the well permit restrictions that are regulated by the state, which is a separate Governor Newsom Executive Order N-7-22, Action 9, are still in effect, so they are still doing the same, regulating well permit submissions based on that executive order regardless of a local proclamation. And then we reached out to the Climate Resilience Office with Teri Lotchens, and she identified that California Disaster Assistance Act for mass pre-mortality is due to drought and bark beetle. I know Supervisor Pyska, you also work with mass pre-mortality. I admit I didn't dive deeper into the impacts of a local emergency drought ordinance on that, but I know you guys have been moving forward with grants, and I don't know if any of them are directly tied to that ordinance or not, or that proclamation.
Yeah, I think Stephen and Genevieve maybe could speak on that better.
Okay.
They'll be available at the next, the next item.
Okay. And then I did reach out to the tribal EPAs, this was not directed, we were supposed to look at inner departments, but I know that they're working on a lot of projects that have to do with water, and so I reached out to Robinson, Habemotol, Pomo of Upper Lake, and Big Valley Rancheria, and they identified they don't have any current drought-related projects that are directly tied to local drought proclamation, and they either have drought-related projects that have been awarded, approved, or funded that are in progress already or have been completed. And then this is an updated slide from special districts that was presented during some of the last drought updates in 2022, and basically it was just an update on some of the drinking water systems around the county, and so there, I checked with Scott Harder, and this still all applies, there was no major changes and no impacts from the drought that is not provided here. And they have received funding for extending some, to explore source redundancies and extending drinking water lines into the lake, and those are not tied to a local drought proclamation that have already either been funded or in progress or completed. And I did want to bring to the attention of the Board that we do have water conservation ordinances already in place, so there is voluntary water conservation measures webpage on special districts website. There also is a water conservation ordinance, and you guys can see in the bottom right-hand of the slide, this ordinance has gone through several iterations between 1995 and 2005, and part of the ordinance includes things like low-flesh toilets, low-flow showerheads. These are things that are requirements the state of California put in place when a house goes for sale, they have to have these items in order to close escrow. And so this is a place, if there's any future interest or discussion about looking at water conservation measures above and beyond this ordinance, that might be a place to put that or amend the ordinance, which has been done before, so there's precedent for that, but just want to make sure that this is aware to the public and to the Board, that this is here for water conservation. And part of this, in preparing for the presentation, I did reach out to the state's drinking water division, and one of the things that they inform me of is that there's legislation that was put in place from 2018, the drought planning Senate Bill 606 and Assembly Bill 1668, and this applies directly to urban retail water suppliers, and at first we didn't think it applied to us, we're not urban, you know, we don't have urban retail water suppliers, but it actually indicates it's 3,000-plus end users, which does apply to drinking water systems around Lake County. And so what this is, and you can visit this webpage, the Water Conservation Portal, is identifying or outlining the rulemaking to make conservation a California way of life, and so while it's not yet a regulation from the state, it is coming down the pipeline to implement long-term drought planning for water, water purveyors and water suppliers. And there might be some other things in there about conservation for the end users. And so this is just another thing to be on the lookout for if there's any, again, future discussion or interest in doing any drought ordinances or anything of that nature, this might be something to look at to make sure all those regulations are included in that structure, as suggested by my contact at Drinking Water Division.
All right, as for next steps, our drought task force, we plan to meet during development of our drought resiliency plan and regional water funding program. We plan to comply with state drought proclamations, continue working with the Water Board, CDFW, tribes, and community to comply with state drought requirements for the Clear Lake Hitch, in-stream flow needs, and water conservation efforts, continue county facilities water conservation efforts, public messaging on water conservation as needed, and Lake County drought planning page at the Lake County Water Resources website.
And here's what that website looks like, and this presentation is uploaded and on that website, you can access it right now. We also list the water resource drought activities. If there's any drought task force information, it'll be on this webpage, and the drought plan development, community engagement opportunities will also be housed here, so if anybody wants to participate or learn more, they'll be able to access that information here, and then if there's any outreach and education, water conservation, what we're doing to conserve water at the county, those kinds of things can also be housed at this website. And if you go to the Water Resources webpage and you look to the left blue tab, I've highlighted it in yellow, it's alphabetical under drought planning. And if there's any questions, this is the contact, we're in the middle here, Lake County Water Resources, anybody can call us at 707-263-2344, send us an email, and then there's also contacts for Department of Water Resources, State California, and the Water Board if there's any questions about their the Water Board if there's any questions about their drought planning and their drought current events. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions? Supervisor Pyska?
I have a question. When do you think you'll start the drought task force meetings?
I'm having a meeting with STANTEC on Monday to go over what our next steps are in terms of that. So I would imagine probably by the end of April, we will be beginning that task force again.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Supervisor Green?
And speaking of STANTEC, so I assume that's a consultant. We've already led a contract to bootstrap the creation of our drought management plan. Or what's the deliverable on that STANTEC contract?
The deliverable is to assist us in the entire completion and drafting of the compliance work, the compliance plan for the Senate Bill 552. And so they will be facilitating our drought task force, so they'll help lead those discussions, and they will be helping draft that. And we, that was a application through Department of Water Resources. There are no funds that come out of the county that is sponsored by DWR. They pay everything for STANTEC, and they facilitate and assist us with that plan. And that is already in place.
And not a criticism in any way, but for example, the City of Lake Board is already circulating a draft of their drought management plan. So it's possible we're a little bit farther down the road in our compliance efforts with 552.
We are currently--
Roughly a year behind maybe where we need to be.
Yeah, so we are currently in compliance because we drafted our, our long-term drought task force. But now that regulations are coming out more and more, that we have to create that full plan. So we're not technically out of compliance, but we're actively working to meet all of the requirements of that, so.
All right. And under 552, this is state legislation. So although drought can definitely reach emergency conditions, 552 and similar legislation and similar state programs are not in and of themselves reliant on any particular state or local declared emergency.
Correct.
It's just more proactive drought planning as opposed to drought reaction.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, and that was along with the legislation that was board direction that we worked on in 2021 and 2022. And this is our opportunity when we're not in a drought to continue that work so that we've got everything in place when we get to that situation again because we know it's going to happen.
Correct.
Anything further on this presentation? Seeing none, I want to open it up for the public. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none in the Zoom room or in the chamber, I'll bring it back to the board. And thank you very much for your presentation. Not sure if you want to stick around for the next item since it's highly related--
We'll hang out out there.
--in case we have questions about drought. But we'll go ahead and move on to consideration, our 9:45 a.m. item. Consideration of continuation of an emergency declaration for drought conditions. The presentation that we just received was to inform us on the status of our current drought, our current drought, of where we are in comparison to when we had a drought in 21, 22, when we did declare this emergency, and seeing if it's the impacts of getting rid of this emergency or if it needed continuation. And so open it up for discussion. Actually, real quick, before we do start, I want to add something. It was highlighted that we had passed a hydrology necessity based on the drought, and that was mentioned that if the declaration goes away, that goes away as well with discretion still within the power of the department to be able to request hydrology reports. But we also did pass a water truck ordinance as we had some issues with water trucks just in, in general during the drought and the concern of how they were being utilized and moving water around our county. So that's another one that would be impacted that was not highlighted in the presentation. Just wanted to make sure and add that to the conversation. And so any comments or questions regarding the emergency proclamation? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a couple bullet points. So in the, the staff report that is attached with all our agenda items, I just, to my knowledge, the, the text of that staff report is basically the original staff report that was filed in 2021 when the original emergency declaration was enacted. So if there's any fresh information, I just want to point out that particular staff report doesn't have any. And I'm interested to see what type of departmental input we may be able to get today. The previous presentation kind of highlighted the various county departments that may have some intersection with drought response. And I didn't see anything in that presentation that indicated an ongoing need for this emergency proclamation. So in my own mind, as I've kind of parsed this issue, and I did request this come-off consent a couple months ago, no doubt, the 2021 drought was serious and deserved all due consideration and response. No doubt, we're going to have future droughts. But we are now three years past the passage of this original emergency proclamation. The lake is full. We have no people living with drought within the county. And so it raises a valid question, you know, when, when is enough? You know, when does the emergency actually end? And we continue the hard work that we need to do on drought planning, but we don't have to do it on an emergency footing based on an emergency proclamation describing conditions that no longer exist in the county, right? So there will be future droughts, but if you were to ask me today, and based on the previous report, is there a drought in Lake County presently sufficient that we need to continue this drought proclamation today? I would say no. Also, it wasn't mentioned in the staff report again because that staff report is three years old. There are two ordinances that were passed in 2021 on an urgency basis by this board in response to the then drought emergency. Just for clarification, the enhanced water analysis ordinance is 3106, and the amended water hauler ordinance is 3113. I did reach out briefly. There's only three licensed water haulers in the county. Some of them don't even do all that much work in the county. And they were either unaware of the ordinance or had no impact on their operations because they don't serve agricultural operations. So all props for a appropriate drought response in 2021 when we needed that, all hands on deck. But I, I'm proposing today that we sunset this emergency proclamation. And if there's any questions about the potential impacts on funding or on these urgency ordinances that were passed, I guess staff is available to answer those questions. But I'm very comfortable with sunsetting this today.
Thank you for your comments. Anything further from the board?
Are we, are we hearing from the auditor?
Ms. Dakota Hockett is here. If you'd like to come up, please.
Okay, great.
My name is Dakota Hockett. I'm the Emergency Event Fiscal Manager for the Disaster Response and Recovery Budget Unit held within the Auditor Controller's Office. Per Government Code Section 8685.4, the local emergency proclamation is a prerequisite to apply for financial assistance to the state. It is not something that has to. So it comes before, it doesn't necessarily have to keep continuing after. And then per Government Code Section 8630D, at the earliest possible date that conditions warrant, we should probably terminate the local proclamation. And so if conditions are not persisting, then it is not required for funding to continue.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
I will say that does defer a little bit from prior conversations. I don't know if Cal OES has a specific reason for why they stated what they stated or if we misunderstood, but I know that prior conversations were that Cal OES is requesting that we continue our emergencies despite the government code that says otherwise. So I, I don't mind moving forward today with whatever the board decides. But if it's possible to just always triple-check with those that would be doing the reimbursement and signing off and making sure that that government code is the way that they abide to, that would be great.
So after doing some research and looking into it, I think it's a matter of, one, shifting or differing employees that we get at Cal OES, and so changing guidance. And then the other fact is we have, we've had fire disasters, we've had epidemics, we've had water. And so there's so many different varieties of disasters that there's no way to treat each one the same. And so sometimes we might have been told something for one event, and then we took that rule forward and we carried it because that's what we were told. There's also the fact that there, we can get fire management assistance grants, which are different than public assistance grants, which are different than hazard mitigation grants, even though they're all coming from the same funding source. So I def, I believe it came from a matter of abundance of caution.
Right.
No point in jeopardizing millions of dollars.
Okay. I have a follow-up question. So yes, a lot of turnover at Cal OES these days. It's really hard to follow what's going on there. The hitch proclamation references the drought proclamation, and so does that need to be rewritten or is it fine to stand alone?
So I am, I've not really been involved in the hitch emergency, so I don't want to speak on it. I would recommend if you guys have been assigned a Cal OES representative for that disaster or for that event, I would talk to them specifically because I don't, I'm not even sure how far in the application process the hitch emergency is at.
Was, would Water Resources like to speak to that or no? I saw facial expressions.
The hitch emergency didn't involve Cal OES, so I'm not sure how that would impact this. I will say that the hitch emergency proclamation is useful for projects that we have been funded, and there's still potential for projects that we could use that. I think, I, I don't know about the having a, the item in there that references the drought ordinance, but I'm, maybe you could do the same thing that Gavin Newsom did and just rewrite it, replace it with different language and refer to the state drought proclamation, which would be the dash seven dash five five thing.
Okay, because it's a first whereas.
Yeah. Now, there's definitely some interconnectedness. And I think with the, my personal opinion is with the executive order that states the need to do work on the hitch, I think by itself stands alone to get all the support that we've been getting. And so maybe revising it so that we can make sure that it stands on its own here for our declared emergency. That way, we can make sure that it can continue. Anything further? Supervisor Green, is your pen still up or new?
This is new, just because I'm educating myself, and we all are. So I understand reluctance to upset the apple cart if there's any funding in play here. But again, we're talking about an emergency proc in this case that is three years old. And so going back to the Government Code site that Dakota gave us, procs are prerequisite. They, they state the conditions at the time. They state an actual condition of emergency. And if that moves us into a position to get a certain bucket of money or two, that's fine. They should not be viewed as money-making tools, evergreen things that just stay there without having direct and actual knowledge that a funding stream may be threatened. So part of my education has been to show a little patience if we are actually able to identify funding streams that we are actually tied to. But I also want to use this as a teaching, teachable moment to say that there's a, there's a limit to this. And if we don't have, it, it's much easier to get an emergency proc on agenda than it is to get it off. And that's because we have a mechanism through OES or whatever agency to bring an emergency proc, but we don't have a review, a review process in place and no clear authority among departments to, to handle that review process. So that's just it. So if there's something we need to clarify in the hitch proc, if we need to cite to a revised emergency order, you know, I think that California backing off most of its drought restrictions a full year ago should have triggered some response on the local level for us to review our stuff, and that just didn't happen. So I just want to distinguish in my own mind, as I continue down this, if there's an emergency, let's keep it stated and let's keep the proc on point. But if the state of emergency itself has passed, and we're not going to lose a big bucket of money if we sunset the proc, then let's just get on with it, you know?
Okay, well, we're just untangling things today. That's all we're doing. So I just want to confirm, because it was brought up earlier with the tree mortality emergency, and I don't know if you want to speak to that or if Stephen's available. Because I, I, I think we're okay with that one, but I just want to make sure that it's on the record here and we're all on the same page.
We can come back with that. Stephen's not here today.
Oh, he's not here today? Okay. Well, then he told me on Friday that it was fine. And he had a conversation with Genevieve, too, about it. So I think that we are okay. I just wanted to make sure that we are hitting all the threads that we had brought up and we were concerned about. I appreciate the presentation, and it all laid out in the spreadsheet so that we can move forward knowing that we're in good shape here.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Randall?
Yes, I just wanted to highlight and appreciate the presentation before this because it gives a lot of weight to the discussion. Plus, just thinking about in regards to sunsetting and, and a plan for the future. We do know that at specific times, previous, you know, with the fires happening, scarring and burning vegetation that took place, when it grows back. At the time, when you look back to, after the Mendocino Complex fire, I remember going out to Lake Pillsbury, and it was really full. And that was because there was no vegetation to basically draw from the, the water table. And so now, when you have the vegetation intact, what you, what you have now is more water, less water coming to the channels. And so I think with the plan that we're talking about, it looks like we can ensure that we can do the vegetation work that, that if we don't tend to it, eventually will likely put us in another situation. And it's not the sole solution or, or anything like that, but it's a contributing factor, just like what we talk about other situations. But getting this vegetation work, including that in the plan, talking about different things to ensure we mitigate future drought conditions, knowing that we're in a climate change situation. So I just wanted to highlight that that really helps, and I would like to work on updating these plans and whatnot as well, so.
Thank you for your comment. I think this is a, a shift in what we've typically done. And I think it's with the new information, it feels comfortable to move forward with the change. What I'd like is for that similar new outlook on how emergencies are being handled by Cal OES to maybe get a, either an updated memo or a, a timed item to review the other items that are over a year old and obviously completed as far as the emergency goes and maybe still need to remain because of whatever funding mechanisms are being impacted by it or need to be closed out because Cal OES is not needing us to keep it open. Because we do have a, a list of, I'll say, five others on there, some more recent than others. Yes.
I have an update I received from the Auditor Controller Harrington stating that the tree mortality documents will be updated to refer to the state, and, and that will take care of that item as far as securing or making sure it doesn't conflict with anything that Cal OES requires.
Okay. Does the hitch proclamation then also need to be updated?
I want to get that. Just one moment, I'll be back.
And I think that we can wait till the next time that it's continued. That'll give us time to ensure that the language is correct, whatever is needed. But I think, again, new information with a different perspective from Cal OES leads us to different types of actions here rather than what we've been doing for a while when it comes to our emergency proclamations.
One more thing. I think yesterday, when we were at the Middle Creek Restoration Meeting, we were speaking with some staff from the Upper Lake Tribe, and they had mentioned that with Clover Creek and the gate being closed, it lessened the amount of water that went through and potentially harming the spawning and the eggs of the, of the spawning season and whatnot. So, but that's, of course, naturally for, through this time, through summer, of course. So that's, that, that's a, that's a thought process as well, you know, when it comes to water providing for the survival of the hitch. But that's the only thing I remember talking about with anyone when it came to that situation, but not necessarily a proclamation. But, but just wanted to note that.
Yeah, that was the dewatering due to the closure of the gates. Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. I, I do want to check in, and I don't know if Lieutenant Wells is here to speak for the Sheriff's Department, but this is a sheriff declaration. I want to make sure to check in with the original author and, and check to see if there is approval or reasons to continue. Approval to deny and, and allow it to expire or need to continue.
Morning, Board. Lieutenant Gavin Wells, Deputy Director of County OES. Speaking with Sheriff Howe, we have no opposition to discontinuing the, the emergency ordinance. I also received information that Cal OES has provided that most other operational areas, being the counties, will leave their proclamations in place as long as they're-- until the recovery process has ended for, for fires and floods or until the funding stream has ended, which it sounds like is the case on both of these.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. So let's open it up for the public. I see we have a hand up in Zoom. Let's go ahead and start there with Brett.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear.
All right. Yeah, how, how are you guys doing?
We're doing great. If you can please get to your comment, that would be great.
Uh, yeah, so I was just making sure you guys got my appeal for the, um, for them, for the code enforcement taking my RV.
So, so that this is not this item right now. We are talking about a declared emergency due to drought. If it's related to the code enforcement item further on an agenda, you're going to have to remain patient and we will get there. We will get to you. We have call in user one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Board. My name is Angela Amaral. I just wanted to clarify, Chair Savalki, you brought up a good point about the water hauler ordinance. And knowing that what the problem was and why that ordinance was needed in the first place, can you clarify, will that ordinance, is it able to stand alone? Will you guys be revisiting, implementing something if this does expire? We don't want to go through the same hassles that we had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the question. At this moment in time, I think that we have the possibility of bringing back a truck ordinance if we feel that that is needed. But with the action taken today of allowing it to expire, it would expire simultaneously. And I'll look at Mr. Guintivano to see if that was a correct statement to make based on the ordinance, the way it was written.
Yes, it's self-executing as far as the, it makes reference to the expiration of that. For purposes of the use of that term expiration, it would be synonymous to the board terminating.
If you can speak in the microphone.
Yeah. So for purposes of the term being used in those two ordinances, the term termination or expiration, it is synonymous to the board effectively terminating the local emergency, should your board decide to do so.
Thank you very much. And just also mention, there were no violations, citations or any of the kind due to the ordinance that was passed. It was definitely meant as a message to make sure to follow the rules, such as who to deliver to and so, so on and so forth. Again, something that can be brought back, but that would expire with the expiration of this declared emergency. I see no further hands up in Zoom. Anybody here in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Please come on up.
Good morning. Sharon Zoller, I'm the Chairperson of the Ag Advisor Committee. We submitted a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to sunset this. And thank you for your consideration as you deliberate this. Also, thank you to the departmental staff for their reports. And a special thank you to Jordan from the Resource Department for jumping on a call in like zero notice to help us with clarification. So we strongly, strongly recommend that you sunset this. Thank you.
Ms. Beaton is outstanding. Thank you for your comment. Any further comments in the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
We don't have a recommended motion, but if, if I were to make a motion, is a motion needed at all if no action is taken when it's sunset by our inaction?
And in reviewing the resolution that proclaimed the local drought emergency, the one that's tied in with the Sheriff's Office Declaration, it does state that this local emergency shall be deemed to continue to exist until its termination is proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors at intervals of no more than 30 days. So it would be, if your board chooses to do so, it would be by motion to terminate the declared local emergency due to drought conditions entered by the Sheriff's, declared by the Sheriff's Office on May 6, 2021 and as ratified by your board on May 11, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you for the conversation.
And just so I can explain, I'd, I'd like to have a plan, like we talked about, with the sunset in place to keep it going until the, the plan's in place, rather than just coming out of it and then creating a plan, if that makes any sense.
You're talking about the drought mitigation plan itself?
Right.
Yeah. It's a plan that would definitely be helpful for unfortunately, our next drought, which we all know we, we will experience at one point or another in the near future. Let's go ahead and go to our 10:00 AM item with our code enforcement. This is a, it says hearing, but I'm going to say it's a public hearing. Mr. Guintivano? Yes. Consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of summary abatement action of recreational vehicle on February 2nd, 2024, located on State Highway 20, Clear Lake Oaks. Is that appropriate?
Yes, and if your board wishes to do so, if there's, if there'll be testimony that all witnesses will testify.
So if there's anybody in the chamber or anybody on Zoom, first in Zoom, raise your hand if you wish to speak on this item or provide testimony so that we can get you in and unmute you so we can get your oath. Okay? And it looks like everybody's ready to go. If we can please do the oath.
Okay.
Or the, whatever.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And we have Director Turner?
Yes.
This is your item.
We'll just take a moment to upload the PowerPoint. I'm Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. I also have with me Marcus Beltramo, our Code Enforcement Manager, as well as a number of our Code Enforcement staff in the audience, should they, should the board have questions. The item that you have before you today is a requested hearing on an assessment done for the summary abatement of the removal of an RV. And I will turn it over to Manager Beltramo.
I can hear fine. No.
We're going to go ahead and mute Mr. Brett. And we will get to you once it is your turn to speak. Thank you.
All right, good morning to the board. My name's Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Lake County Code Enforcement Division. I'll be giving the presentation today regarding a summary abatement, the removal of a recreational vehicle from Highway 20 in Clear Lake Oaks. I also want to make the board aware that we have witnesses on hand, people that were on-site that can give direct testimony to any questions or issues or concerns the board may have. They're all in the front row here. And if needed, they are here to answer any questions. That being said, I'll begin my presentation. The slide says hearing and appeal, but I believe it's now called a hearing and account and a proposed assessment based on the information or guidance from County Council this morning. It is in regards to the removal of a recreational vehicle that was on Highway 20. The registered owner is Brett Hill Jr. I believe he is present in the Zoom room and able to comment here today. Always, we always try to give a, a map of the location. It was in front of the Chinese restaurant there on Highway 20 in Clear Lake Oaks. The one thing I do want to point out in this map here is that the location is directly across from the Keys, a body of water there that does feed into Clear Lake. And the RV was parked over or situated over a storm drain. On March 26, 2024, we did receive a written request from Brett Hill requesting an appeal or to come in front of the board here today. You do have a copy of that appeal. It's in the attachments there. I will not read the, the appeal contents. The violations that we determined that allowed for the summary abatement are the basis for our summary abatement. Our Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 13-3.1, Subdivision E4, any condition detrimental to public health. Any, Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 13-31-E5, any use of lands, building or premises operator maintained contrary to the provisions of Chapter 9. Chapter 9 is the chapter that our Environmental Health Department is primarily charged with and enforces. We also have, Code Enforcement also has the ability to enforce those codes. Lake County Code, Chapter 9, Article 3, Section 9-23.1, no person shall cause or permit any part of the contents of any privy vault, cesspool, septic tank, building, sewer, subsurface disposal system, alternative sewage disposal system, water closet, urinal or any of the other sink or cistern containing any product as defined under public health hazard or any other substances to flow, discharge or to be deposited upon the surface of any lot or premises or public street or sidewalk or public place or into any storm drain or into any stream, river, lake or tributary. Lake County Rules and Regulations, Section 1-20, Subdivision 3, discharge of sewers prohibited. Discharge of untreated or partially treated sewage or septic tank directly or indirectly onto the ground surface or into public waters constitutes a public health hazard and is prohibited. We also use as a basis California Health and Safety Code 5410, Subdivision F, a nuisance, a nuisance means anything which is injurious to health or indecent or offensive to the senses or an obstruction to the free use of property so as to interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life or property and affects at the same time an entire community or neighborhood or any considerable number of persons, although the extent of the annoyance or damage inflicted upon individuals may be unequal and occurs during or as a result of the treatment of or disposal of waste. I also wanted, we also use as a basis, Lake County Code, Chapter 29, which is our stormwater chapter. I chose to include the intent here so, so that the board has full information. Chapter 29 is, the purpose of this chapter is to ensure the health, safety and general welfare of the county citizens and to protect and enhance the water quality of water courses and I believe it says waterways in the uncorporated areas of the county in a manner pursuant to and consistent with the Federal Water Act by reducing pollutants and stormwater discharges to the maximum extent practical and by prohibiting non-stormwater discharges. We also cited Lake County Code, Chapter 29, Article 2, Section 29-10.1. It's unlawful for any person to make or cause or to be made any non-stormwater discharge into the county storm drainage system or directly to natural surface waters, except as allowed by the municipal stormwater permit. And the last code that we used as a basis was Lake County Code, Chapter 29, Article 2, Section 29-12.1. It shall be unlawful for any person to discharge or cause to be discharged any stormwater or material that causes or contributes to causing the county to violate water quality standards. The county's obligations under the municipal stormwater permit or any state issued discharge permit. So these are the violations we use as a basis for this summary abatement. Getting into the facts, this issue did come before the board prior. But the facts in here involved is on January 29, 2024, while conducting proactive code enforcement in the area designated as the Roadmap Task Force, we found, or came across this RV. Our first concern was a person's living in an RV. I believe it was located near Fountain Park, which is in Clear Lake Oaks proper. We did post a red tag because we had circumstantial belief that the RV was being used for occupational or habitation purposes. In our investigation of the RV, we discovered leaking and we smelled odors that we believed to be waste matter. And from this picture here, if you can see on the left rear bumper there, below there, you see an orange, kind of an orangey object there. Below that, you can see the water in the sewage that is dripping below it. Up here is kind of a better picture, but you can't really see the, the liquid or the leakage here. But you can see the water tank is in a state of disrepair and that it had, they had tried to seal it up using some kind of expanding foam. At the time, it was leaking onto the ground and there were odors that we believed to be human waste. Environmental Health was called out to the scene. Dan Gould is here today. If you have any questions, it will testify to his observations. Here's just another photo of the leaking onto the ground. Dan Gould can also testify as to the instructions and the corrective actions given to Brett Hill, the registered owner, is what he needed to do to care the situation or resolve the situation. On February 2nd, 2024, Code Enforcement received information that the RV was now situated on Highway 20 in Clear Lake Oaks. It'd been parked there for some time. Our officer reported to the scene and monitored the situation. Here's a photo here of the RV on the ground there. You can see the registered owner Brett Hill. Looks like he's correcting, trying to correct the leakage at the time. Here's a photo from the back. Here's a photo of the expanding foam that was sprayed on to the waste tanks that were leaking. I do want to reiterate, the RV was parked over a storm drain. And those storm drains only are allowed for rainwater to be allowed to be discharged into those drains. No other materials. Again, you can see the expanding foam. It's on the ground now. Again, the tanks are leaking. All that's water, it's a rainy period, so the water is flowing into the drain. This is the site after the RV was towed. As you can see, there's materials on the ground. And as you can see, it's all going into that storm drain. Again, that storm drain feeds into Clear Lake. Here is another photo from another angle of the debris and the materials that were left on the ground. And as you can see, they're all being washed into that drain. Here's a closer photo here, and I believe this is a video. Does it? Do we have the volume on? Okay. So the video would have showed the, after the expanding foam was sprayed on there by the registered owner, you would see leaking coming from the waste tanks there. This is a video that was provided by the mother to Brett Hill Jr. And this video has a lot of, has a material value because on the video, Kim Bowers making comments. If we could get the video to, or the sound to play on the video, I think this would be something material and of value to the board in their consideration. Is there? All right. During the video, what you will hear, and we can provide the video to the board or through other means. But during the video, you'll hear Kim Bowers say that, you see all the county resources that they brought out to address this issue just because her son has a little bit of sewage leaking onto the highway. So this is a comment she made at the time while she was filming us while at the site. I apologize that we did not have the audio to play so that the board could hear that. On February 2nd, 2024, Environmental Health Director Craig Weatherby made a determination Brett Hill Jr.'s RV presented an immediate health risk detrimental to public health. Based on the determination of environmental health, the request for summer abatement was made pursuant to Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 13-9. It was made and it was granted. I also want to add on to the record that prior to code enforcement arriving on the scene, CHP had been called out. And CHP gave instructions to Brett Hill Jr. to move the RV. About a period of about two, three, two to four hours had passed before the RV was actually towed. So the registered owner Brett Hill Jr. did have the opportunity to move the vehicle. He did not move it in the time span provided between when CHP instructed him to move it to when code enforcement arrived, to when the RV was actually towed from its location. This is a email information that was sent over by Craig Weatherby, the Director of Environmental Health. And this was his determination and provided our basis for when, for the summary abatement of the RV. I requested that we have an email outlining his determination before the summary abatement and the towing actually occurred. In his email, he says, "This office received a complaint of an RV which was leaking sewage onto the ground across the street from Chevron, Keys and Clear Lake Oaks. Upon inspection by Dan Gould..." Upon inspection by Dan Gould of this office, it has been determined that the RV has a failed holding tank with significant leaking, which is resulting in an ongoing release of raw sewage onto the ground. The operator had agreed to drive to the nearest dump station to empty the tank, but failed to do so. Multiple attempts to get the owner of the vehicle to repair it or stop using the lavatory have been ignored, and the release continues. The RV is located within 100 feet of Clear Lake Oaks-Khies Waterway, which is connected directly to Clear Lake. A significant storm event had been forecast for Lake County over the weekend, which will result in this release reaching the lake. This office has escalated the threat of this incident to an immediate public health threat, and has requested summary abatement of the situation. We have engaged Marcus of Code Enforcement to assist in the abatement. We have communicated with Dr. Duhon, Lake County Health Officer, Supervisor E.J. Crandall, District 3 Supervisor, and Lloyd with County Council, all provided verbal support to move forward with the summary abatement." Based on that expert determination, that there was a detriment to the public health, we, a summary abatement was made and granted, and on February 2, 2024, the RV was towed from its location and moved to a secure location. The cost of the abatement, just for the tow, was $2,500. I do also have the storage costs. The storage, initially, they were going to charge us $75 a day. Our contractor chose to work with us and reduce that price to $25 a day. The RV was stored at the contractor's lot for 13 days. The Sheriff Howe was gracious enough to allow us to use the armory as a secure location to store the RV, so that we could lower our cost burden, and we moved the RV from a contractor's lot to the armory, which was a $300 cost, which will also, if the board authorizes us to dispose of the RV, those costs will also entail disposal fees of the RV. I think, although not germane to the issue or the summary abatement itself, I believe it relevant to include the case history of this RV. So in March 27, 2023, we, in Clear Lake Oaks, on First Street in Hoover, the RV was parked in the location, and the registered owner, we believe we had information and circumstantial, or reasonable belief to believe he was living in the RV, not in compliance with the county code. As you can see, it's the same RV. We did put a red tag on it for him residing or using the RV for permanent habitation, which is in, not in compliance with the county code. On October 18, 2022, this was an appeal that also came in from the board. The RV was moved onto a lot, he was living on an RV. There you could see substantial garbage was also building up on that lot as well. In April 12, 2022, we were receiving complaints of a motorhome parked on a street two weeks with people living in it, hooked up to electricity to a house. The motorhome is on First, is on First Home Address, is 65 Hoover. 65 Hoover Street is also the, or used to be the residence of Kim Bauer, that's the mother of Brett Hill Jr. So there's reason to believe he was staying in his RV in close proximity or adjacent to his mother's residence at that time. At this time, staff recommends to deny the appeal and approve disposal of the RV if Mr. Phil fails to pay the lawful charges related to the abatement. At this time, this concludes my presentation.
We also did bring a copy of both invoices, so the board can understand the total amount. I think Johan is about to put that one up.
If you need copies, I got copies.
Since these were not attachments to the staff report, we wanted to make sure that both the board and the public have direct access to these documents.
Thank you very much for sharing those documents.
And there is one, one point I would like to add. We are holding the RV for 60 days in compliance, in accordance with a state law that we found. So that's the standard we're using. The 60 days has not expired yet. We took the, we removed the RV on February 2. There were 29 days in the month of February this year, plus the 31 days from March, so at the end of this week, the 60 days should have expired.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. I want to make sure and give Mr. Brett Hill a chance to speak on this item as well. I want to make sure we have all the information before we start asking questions, and so I'll come back to the board. Mr. Hill?
Yes, hello?
Hello.
Yeah, so, good morning, guys. So basically, before I could, I just wanted to reiterate, the pictures that you see of me, was me actually trying to address the problem, that it was leaking sewage, and the Highway Patrol that I had spoken with was actually very helpful. He had told me just to clean up my mess, from me trying to clean up the leak, and to, and he gave me an hour, and within that hour, code enforcement and the environmental health, everybody was there, just, you know, going crazy over it, and didn't give me the adequate amount of time to be able to even assess the problem. And by them taking my RV, it also made me homeless, me and my dog homeless, and my RV is registered and insured. And the only reason why there was a minor leak in it, was because every time I go into a driveway of a, of a gas station, from it being so long, the rear end of it usually clips on the, on the driveway, and therefore, it made a slight leak. I'm talking maybe like a drop every 30 minutes or so. And so, I wasn't, I wasn't, I was, basically, I was just trying to assess the problem, and during that, during me trying to fix the problem, code enforcement had came, and the sheriff had came, and wouldn't even allow me to finish cleaning up my mess. They, they were actually very rude, and very unprofessional, and they gave me 10 minutes to be able to grab my belongings out of my RV, and then pretty much just left me there on the side of the street with, with a bag of clothes. And, and yeah, so, and then the, the other picture that, that is shown of it being, I'm sorry, I can't remember exactly what, how far back it was, but like a few pictures back, it showed the, the red tag on the RV, that, that red tag was never put on my RV until after they had decided to tow the RV. So they literally red-tagged it, and the same exact day they red-tagged it, they towed it, and didn't give me no adequate time to be able to assess the problem at all.
Do you have anything further, Mr. Hill?
I don't have anything further, except for that, you know, I'm homeless, and it's my home, and, and the problem is actually fixed now, it does not leak sewage anymore. And however, if it did leak sewage, wherever they had towed it to, it would still be leaking sewage, so I don't understand how that fixed the problem at all. So, but like I had said, I had video proof of it not leaking anymore, I was actually able to fix the problem of it leaking. And so, yeah, I would, I would just ask for you guys to, to give me my RV back, you know?
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. I do want to check in with Mr. Beltramo. Has the issue itself been resolved as far as the nuisance of the leak?
So, when the RV was towed to our contractor's lot, the tow contractor called me the day after, said that the RV was leaking all over his lot, and that he, we needed to do something to get it out of his lot, because raw sewage was leaking all over his lot. The tow contractor then called me back and said that he couldn't wait, and went and pumped it himself. So when it was moved over to the armory, that's, all the tanks had been pumped.
So basically, there is no more liquid in the vehicle, therefore, nothing to leak until it gets refilled?
Correct.
Okay. Appreciate that. I want to start with Vice Chair Crandall.
So how many times was this tagged? Marcus?
So, it was initially tagged in a prior case, that's why I brought the case history. It was tagged on January 29, and it was also tagged again on February 2.
Okay. And was it, was it tagged during the 22 year and the 21 years as well?
I don't know about, so the 2022 issue that was, I don't recall if it was red-tagged or not. I do, we did see the photo where it was red-tagged in 2023, and I don't have any further recollection of any other red tags being placed on this RV.
Was this RV ever parked in like the parks as well?
So the, on the January 29, it was parked by Fountain Park, I believe that's Nylander Park right next to it. This is an RV that moves around the Clear Lake Oaks area, so it is, it's basically located and been situated on public right-of-ways.
Okay. And that's the only questions I have, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. In your presentation, one of the code sites you included was to, something I wasn't familiar with, Lake County Rules and Regs 1-20, Part N3 pertaining the discharge of sewage. I was unable to find that, so is that Lakosan, Environmental Health, whose rules and regs are you citing from?
So we'll need to have Mr. Dan Gould come up and state to that, that's a regulation used by our environmental health. That's a code section that you won't find in the county code, I believe. Dan can comment on where you can find that, that site.
I guess it's my turn. Yeah, that's going to be coming from our rules and regs that we have for under environmental health for that particular type. It also falls with the nuisance, as well as for the, the danger of what it can cause. So if you need me to, I can get one, copy forwarded to you, I don't have one here.
All right. It's probably not super relevant to the conduct of today's hearing, but I do think giving fair notice to the public of what rules and regs we have would be appropriate, and so I can follow up with the H.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything further?
I have a question.
Please.
Just for Mr. Hill and for the public, if you are living in an RV, where do you legally live in an RV in the county?
That would be RV parks and campgrounds. Those are areas that have been developed to, to, to serve the needs of wastewater and water.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm actually in the process of getting my disability granted, and so I'm, you know, living on very low income right now, so I can't afford the, you know, the amount of rent that they're asking for at these, you know, mobile parks or these RV parks. However, I'm going to be getting my disability granted here very soon, and I plan on parking the RV at a mobile park, and legally, legitimately paying all fees and, and rent and all that.
Thank you very much. And if it's possible, if we can mute Mr. Hill, and if you can please raise your hand if you wish to speak, that way we can make sure to organize the conversation. I do have a quick question. I see 2,500, I see 625, what is the total amount? I don't feel like that's written on our memo. It provides numbers, but it doesn't say what is actually owed as a whole. And before you answer, are there any administrative fees? I mean, from the number of folks that have taken part in this process, typically, we see administrative fees for time spent, just kind of curious if that is in addition to.
So I'll answer the first part of that question, if my math is correct, and please check my math. I believe the total amount is $3,125 for the total, the tow, the storage, and then the tow to the secure, new secure location. And then the second part of that question, I'm sorry, can you repeat the second part real quick?
Administrative fees.
Administrative fees. So, the code does not provide or silent on cost recovery as it relates to a summary abatement. If there was a, if this was an abatement from private property, there is a cost recovery mechanism in place where we can charge those, but in this situation, I didn't see any ability for, or a code for cost recovery, so this is something that we'll have to consider if we ever try to update our Chapter 13 Public Nuisance Code to address this, I guess, gap or silence here in the code. So we didn't believe it fair to charge any administrative costs when we didn't believe we had the authority, or we couldn't find an authority that allows us to do that.
Okay. No, I appreciate the response on that. And then a quick question, just because there was a question from Mr. Hill about, it was red-tagged and he wasn't given the chance, that would be due to the summary abatement, which means that a abatement needs to be done immediately, not given a 48-hour notice or 30-day notice. Can you respond to that?
Yeah, so I would say we gave him ample opportunity to correct the issue. Remember, this occurred over a whole week. January 29, it was already leaking.
But I'm going to speak to the red tagging itself.
Oh, the red tagging itself. So when we got there, we placed the red tag on there. By the time we placed the red tag, we were still in the process of getting all the information and determining how we were going to handle this. The request for a summary abatement was made after the red tag was placed on there. Now, a red tag is not necessarily for a summary abatement. We were just going through our normal processes of red tagging it, because one, he was living in there. The summary abatement itself does not necessitate a red tag. A summary abatement just means there's an immediate risk to the public health. Again, this was situated, situated over a drain. All the sewage, all the materials are flowing into that drain, which are discharged directly into Clear Lake, our drinking water, and so we felt, based on that issue, we had a basis to substantiate a summary abatement and to remove it. In my opinion, Mr. Hill did have the opportunity to remove the RV, if it was operable, he could have driven it away, doesn't not take that long to start it up and move it. I also want to add, during this period, he actually pulled off a saw and was sawing off the old expanding foam, letting that drop on the ground, and then pulling out a new can and spraying new expanding foam on there to seal it. So there's a lot of passage of time there where the vehicle could have been moved. And again, this did occur over a two to four hour period.
And I appreciate the symbolism of the storm drainage, but the fact is, even if it was 200 feet or even 1,000 feet further up, storm drainage is meant to collect all of that water that flows on that entire roadway and that entire area, which then brings it to the storm drainage, which also brings it to the, to the lake. I know it's symbolic to the fact that it was right over it, but it still has an impact no matter where that leak would have been occurring, in my opinion. And so, just want to highlight that it's a general issue, no matter where you are, not just a general issue because of the specific location in which it was parked. Are there any further questions from Board Vice Chair?
So I noticed on the document, it states that they did have CNS drain the waste. Did they include the charge, or they just had it done?
It's my understanding our contractor did that as a courtesy. We have really good contractors that work for us, and they extend courtesies given the costs that are involved sometimes, and they do work with us, so I appreciate them.
I remember this day, because there was two in one day, plus another, a site, so they, so not only was this happening in, in Clear Lake Oaks, there was 15th Avenue, and then we went to like, I think it was 8th Avenue.
7th Avenue.
7th Avenue, and so it was just one of those days, and so it was, but that was really intense to see, so. I think that's all I had, but, yeah.
All right, thank you. I do see a hand up from Mr. Hill, just want to make sure that it's not an old hand up, and in case you have something new that you want to provide.
I just wanted to state that during, during, during the time that I was trying to fix the problem, that they were wanting to tow it over, was when they decided to tow it from me, and so they didn't give me adequate time to even assess the problem at all. And the Highway Patrol, in fact, was actually very helpful and very kind, and told me just to clean up my mess and to move it. And during that time of me trying to move it, is when they, you know, just totally, just totally rushed, rushed me, and didn't, didn't give me adequate information as to what they were doing, or adequate time to help the situation. I was literally under the RV, trying to fix the problem, when they decided to make me back away from it and tow it from me.
Thank you for your comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, January 29 was when the initial interaction to say fix the problem with environmental health, providing ideas on how to solve the problem. February 2 is when those pictures were taken over the grate, so that's at least four days of potential time provided to the individual to resolve the problem of leaking sewage, wherever he was driving, all around the community. And I'm, I'm getting a nod from code enforcement that those facts are correct, and I just, I want to make those statements, because I think time was provided to you. Sewage should not be spilled, no matter where you are. An RV is your own home. If you were, for example, renting a house, and there were problems where your house had to be red-tagged, your landlord would have to provide you the resources to be able to resolve the problem. If you are your own landlord, such as owning an RV, you have to take those responsibilities in your own hands to be able to ensure that your domicile, your vehicle, is in proper order, so it is not a nuisance to the community, or else you have to take care of those problems. I will state that I, I will not get in the way at all of the charges that have incurred from this situation. I do have concerns about the dis- I do have concerns about the dismantling of the vehicle, but at the same time, I do not have the knowledge that this is a fixable problem, especially if it's hitting the bottom of other driveways. That's not something we're going to rectify. We're not going to change driveways. I just know that in dealing with the issues of the population experiencing homelessness in Lake County, the last thing I want to do is add more and create further burden. But at the same time, this vehicle is a burden to the community as well. And I, it needs to be resolved before it ever goes back into the hands of the individual so that it does not continue. And I'll stop at that point. There is one more hand that did shoot up. I want to make sure and get Donna Makowitz, and I think after this one, we will close public comment.
She gets sworn in.
And you did not get sworn in, Ms. Makowitz. Do you wish to speak still? If so, we need to do a swearing in.
Yes, please, and I'd like to be sworn in.
Okay. If we can please do that.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Donna Makowitz, representing the Clear Lake Oaks Property Owners Association. Unfortunately, this isn't just an isolated event, and many times we patrol our area. And when we do see a motor home, such as this one, was always leaking sewage, we ask them, especially Ed Lee and our president, to ask them to please move because our drainage is so, it really affects the lake immediately. So every 72 hours, if they haven't moved, which they do move, we go back and make sure they have moved. So it's like he's just moving one place to the next place, to the next place because we don't report anything until it's been 72 hours to CHP. And thank you for letting me comment.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. And Mr. Hill, I see you have your hand up. Since you are the appellant on this, I want to give you the last chance to finish up.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to state that I, now that it's completely drained of sewage, if you, you know, granted the RV back to me, I would, I would promise you that it wouldn't leak again because I would no longer use the facilities in it whatsoever.
Appreciate the comment. And we'll see how the board chooses to move forward here. Okay, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board, looking for either continued deliberation or action.
So I'll go ahead and if there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and make the.
Please, Mr. Guntavano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So since this is the hearing on the post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment, the summary abatement will be cost referenced in this hearing. Your board may confirm the assessment for the specified dollar amount for the RV. And that's done pursuant to Lake County Code. Well, that would be the confirmation of the assessment under Lake County Code Section 5-43.2 as the first motion, and then there'll be a second one if your board wishes to do so.
So, so moved with the county council's statement.
And that would be for the amount of, would that be 3,125?
Correct.
If the math is correct.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we seem to have a second motion.
The second motion would, if your board chooses to do so, would be to motion, motion to direct staff pursuant to the recommended action or part of the recommended, recommended action by CDD to dispose of the RV. And your board may make that direction to staff pursuant to Lake County Code Section 13-38. If CDD is also on board with that recommendation.
If we get the authorization, we would look to dispose of the RV in accordance with Chapter 13, Section 13-38, where we would take it to a licensed dismantler and have them dispose of it, just as we would dispose of any vehicle we would tow under the ABLE program.
And part of that, this second motion pursuant to, in accordance with staff's, CDD staff's recommendation, is that the RV would be disposed if Mr. Hill fails to pay the lawful charges related to the abatement. That necessitates, if your board wishes to consider a timeline of sorts or a deadline for Mr. Hill to pay, such that if it doesn't meet that deadline, then the RV would be disposed. That could be a part of your board's motion as well, if your board wishes to do, if your board wishes to do so.
So that would be giving time for the appellant to pay the amount and then recoup his RV. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry.
Would that be correct, giving the appellant time to be able to pay to retrieve their RV? That would be what we would be making the vote on if we added a time?
I'm comfortable if you would like to add a time. So I believe this is a decision that the board would have to make. And I believe my director may have a comment on this as well.
Okay, love to hear it.
That would be my understanding as well. If the, if Mr. Hill paid the assessment, we would then release the RV.
Okay. And it would be as-is, which has the potential to?
Which we could be back here at a future date.
Yes. But at least at this moment in time, we do have the RV in our possession, and that is the way for them to get it back into their possession is to pay the fee of the $3,125. Okay, I'd love to hear from Vice Chair Crandall.
I really feel like we'll be back here if we, if we don't dispose of it. So it's unfortunate. But I deal with numerous RVs in the district, and this, this is just one of those issues that I tend to agree with one of the statements earlier. We'll be back here within six months. You know, I understand and I empathize with the appellant and I really would like to take the promise, but I cannot. So if I, I would rather expedite.
And so at this moment in time, the 60 days began on February 2nd. Therefore, as you stated earlier, it would expire by the end of this week. Is there a date certain?
I don't believe I have a date certain, but I believe based on my calculations and given the fact that it was a 29 leap year for February, there's an extra day. But I believe by the end of this week, the 60 days has sufficiently passed. We've been in communication with Brett Hill and his mom. So it was towed on February 2nd, which was a Friday. That Monday, they called in, and we gave them all the information they needed to retrieve the vehicle. We even extended the courtesy of allowing them to get personal property that they need out of the vehicle, which is not really the procedure we have.
So a specific question. Did you give them the 60 days where it had an actual expiration date? Because I would prefer we give a specific date today, whether it's this Friday, whether it's exactly the 60 days, just so that we don't walk away saying sometime by the end of the week. I think it's better to walk away with a very specific date.
If it was towed on February 2nd with 29 days in February, not counting the 2nd, that would be 26. Then 31 in March, that comes to 57. So on the 3rd of February, which is tomorrow, that would be 16. I'm sorry, yeah, April would be tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you for providing us that information, and I'll leave, hold on one second. Supervisor Green?
So it may not be relevant. You may not even know, but if, if in fact the tank is still leaking or can the car, can the RV even be lawfully operated? If the owner were to come try to transport it after redeeming the costs, would that driver not be an immediate violation, not on the, not on the basis of any immediate leak that we're observing from the empty tank, but just on the fact that it's an RV with an inoperable sewage system? It may be a vehicle code thing, I don't know, but are we even authorized to release this, even if he does come up with the money?
So I, I don't have, I don't have an answer to that. CHP would be the determinant if it can operate on a public roadway in the condition that it's in. Usually, the rule of thumb is if it can operate safely on a roadway. Of course, you have it leaking raw sewage. So I apologize, I'm not going to be able to give you the, a certain answer on that.
And I know that we've had the discussion that it would be as-is in return and any repercussions due to the usage of the facilities or any other issue that that would continue on with the normal enforcement that we have. Vice Chair?
So do I just read it the way it reads here, or is there more to it?
Is your board willing to consider the deadline aspect of this? Because the other option is to just direct staff to dispose of the RV.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm at.
And so one motion could be to direct staff to dispose of the RV pursuant to Lake County Code Section 13-38. That would be a motion that your board can take.
So moved.
And this would be unless paid off by the end of the day, April 3rd? Because that was the 60 days that we just discussed.
And I'll add that to the motion as well.
Thank you for the clarity.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And just a quick addition, the COC is working on a pamphlet to provide to all agencies to hand out for knowledge of services and available resources all around the county. And I think that's something that if you have in hand, that would be useful in situations like this as well. Just because this is not the first, and this will not be the last of your experiences with this. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our 10:15 a.m. item, Consideration of a Letter of Support for Inclusion of Calpines to Geysers Facility in the California Legis, California Leg of the Biden Administration's Investing in America Tour with U.S. Department of Energy Secretary Jennifer M. Granholm. And this was brought to us by Supervisor Paeska.
Yeah, so I was contacted by Calpine to provide this letter of support. This is, as the executive summary says, this is a tour to highlight the growth of the developing clean energy economy, including the creation of good-paying jobs and private sector investment. So we have the largest geothermal field in the world, and Calpine is the largest investor there, although there are other players. So I, I'm excited to offer this letter of support so that hopefully the secretary will come and visit the steam field with Calpine.
Thank you for bringing this to the board. Any questions or comments?
No, ready to support.
Okay. Just a quick question. Do you know if other counties, because I know it does go into Sonoma County a little bit, their area? Do you know if they're drafting a similar letter? Okay. Just want to make sure they come here.
Come to our side.
Yes. All right. Open it up for public comment. I see none in Zoom and none in the chamber. Bringing it back for action.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the letter of support for inclusion of Calpines to Geysers Facility in the California leg of the Biden Administration's Investing in America Tour with the U.S. Department of Energy Secretary Jennifer M. Granholm, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go to our, do we have Mr. Sullivan? Oh, he's online. It looks like he just turned on his video camera. So our 10:30 a.m. item, Consideration of an Opposed Unless Amended Position Letter on SB 964 Seado, Mr. Sullivan.
Good morning, Board. Patrick Sullivan, Treasury Tax Collector. So SB 964 is, legislation is currently proposed. It's been amended multiple times. And with each amendment, it's sort of expanded the scope of its impact on tax sales. What's unfortunate is, partially due to the nature of our situation in Lake County, the changes proposed by this legislation would disproportionately impact us. One of the first points raised now are excess proceeds. If you recall, just a few weeks ago, my office came in front of your board to request permission to distribute those proceeds. We go through an extensive process here to identify potential claimants, contact them. There's various procedures and protocols involved in them making their claims. But at the end of it, funds that are unclaimed do go into the County General Fund. We do have the ability to recover those funds. We also have the ability to recover certain costs associated with maintaining the delinquent role and the tax sale itself. This legislation, as it currently stands, threatens both of those. It is proposing to strike the section that allows those remaining proceeds to go to the County General Fund. They would instead go in as unclaimed funds to the state, for the state to use with their budget. It also limits the ability of us to cost recover. And I don't have a full understanding of which areas we'd no longer be able to recover from. That's something that we're currently looking into, but it certainly would restrict our ability to recover those funds. Perhaps the larger issue for us, though, which is not strictly monetary, is that this legislation would require that we do a Chapter 7 tax sale first on any property before it goes to a Chapter 8 sale. So again, Chapter 7 is the auction. Chapter 8 is an agreement sale where the county is either taking the property itself or it's being sold to another eligible agency, district, or nonprofit for certain qualified uses and criteria. By requiring a Chapter 7 sale first, this could really create a lot of complications for us. I think as we're all aware, there we have the paper subdivisions and other lots throughout the county that just are not attractive on their own to buyers. And we also have the issue that buyers who purchase them often are unaware that the property they're purchasing may not really be usable, buildable, developable in any way. And the tendency in the past has been that someone would purchase those properties. Often, there are firms that will purchase them and then flip them in a private sale to a new buyer who does not understand what they've purchased. And then they ultimately go delinquent again, and this cycle just repeats. So often, one of our best options is to be able to sell to an agency. For instance, we just did a sale with the city of Clear Lake, who is a buyer that is capable and competent, able to develop these properties, able to do things with them that a private party would not be able to do. We would lose that ability unless we spend significant staff time and expense to do these Chapter 7 sales first. So I guess just to highlight what's also not in the memo, the intent behind this legislation, I believe, is to account for the Supreme Court case Tyler v. Hennepin. The Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association is the sponsor of this bill, and they were one of the proponents behind that case and the other cases like it going on around the country. And I think their fear is that there's a very small set of Chapter 8 sales. And we have not done this here in Lake County. But the allegation is that there are agencies and counties in the state that have taken a property, let's say it is someone's home, and sold it at a deep discount, far below market value, deprived the owner of that equity as the government takes it themselves. We have not engaged in that practice here. I understand that is a completely valid concern. But this legislation is quite sweeping now, and if that was the original intent, it has expanded far beyond that purpose. So at this point, Matthew Rothstein from the CIO's office and myself worked together to help draft this letter. I'm happy to take any questions or comments, if there are suggested revisions or anything else, I'm available.
Thank you very much for presenting this item to us. Are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Just appreciate it, appreciate the information, all this background coming with the support letter. But I'm seeing in the companion letter from the state organization, the opposed unless amended, that letter actually puts forth some proposed amendments. So in our local iteration of the support letter, if we're actually going to take the opposed unless amended, should we also cite to, you know, the exact things we hate about it? Are we going to propose separate amendments within our letter as well, or?
So I believe our letter, the county's letter as proposed now, is referencing that letter from the California Association of County Treasurers and Tax Collectors, which is an organization I'm a part of. So we have referenced their letter. That's why it is included with the board packet. And are you suggesting that we incorporate their letter directly into this?
No, I see, now that I see it at the bottom of page two, you do cite that by reference, but. But I guess if you were planning to attach that with your letter as well, just so the author of the bill, I'm sure they already have notice of the proposed amendments. But, okay, thank you for answering the question. You're on point here.
Anything else? So I know I spoke with Mr. Sullivan yesterday. There is one portion of this letter that bothers me a little bit. It's under the excess proceeds paragraph, right about in the middle. It reads, "These revenues are relied on to provide essential services, and any threat to general fund revenues would meaningfully affect service delivery." And I feel like that's playing right into the fears of the author of this bill, that we are potentially, and I know we're not, but it kind of reads that we're utilizing the tax sale to bolster our general fund. And that's not what we do. It just happens to be the excess proceeds because nobody has requested to have access to what is rightfully theirs because they're a party of interest. And therefore, what's left over, just like I think last week when we did the excess proceeds, we had between $200,000 and $400,000, I forget off the top of the head exactly the amount, but that was not claimed and therefore went into our general funds. Those are not things that we count on. Those are just things that occur at the end of a tax sale, again, when parties of interest have not taken all the potential excess proceeds. And so I don't feel like that is a good comment to make because I really feel it plays right into the hands of those that fear that tax sales are utilized for wrongful things. And so I would like to suggest a change of that wording to say, "These proceeds should be reinvested into our communities through local decision-making processes. Providing these proceeds to the state may not result in reinvestment of our communities." Because this is local funds that need to be placed back into local needs. If we give it to the state, I don't even know that we're going to get any of that money back. And I don't feel that we should be providing money to a coffer that eventually goes to more urban areas where there may be a greater voice to request those funds. Or we're going to lose some off the top because they're going to pay us administrative fees and so on and so forth. But I think mentioning that it helps to bolster our general funds is not a comment that I think we should mention to this author. And wanted to hear from Mr. Sullivan and, of course, hear from the board on that comment.
I understand your concern, and that certainly was not our intent to have it read that way. So the fact that someone may read it that way is not something we want. And yes, that may accidentally lend some undue support to the author's concern. I think the language you proposed makes sense. We could also just strike that sentence if that's appropriate, and that may work as well. But I think either option would be fine. And I agree, in light of the fact that could be misinterpreted, I think it's wise to, at a minimum, remove it.
And I'm okay if the line just disappears as well as an option. Vice Chair Crandall.
Yeah, I'm good with striking it. I think that anyone's going to read into anything that's written, no matter what. So striking it, I think, serves a good purpose.
I agree.
I agree with striking it.
Okay. If there's no further comments, I'll open it up for the public. Any comments? Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see none in the chamber and no hands raised in the Zoom room, so I'll bring it back for action for the board.
Senator, further, Chair, I move to approve the opposed unless amended position letter as amended on Senate Bill 964. Sayarto, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Let's see, it's 11:41. I feel like community development was ready to charge up. But I think I'm going to try to go in order of what is in our untimed, and I know that we've also had behavioral health waiting patiently in the back as well. Let's go ahead and do Item 7.2, Presentation of Lake County Behavioral Health Services' External Quality Review Organization Report for Fiscal Year 2223. And Director Jones and her team are coming up.
Good morning. Johanna, if you could please put up the, it's a PDF that has our slides of our presentation. Thank you so much. All right, so I am joined here today by staff Vanessa Mayer. She is our Program Manager for Compliance, a lot of other things. Compliance, I just want to give a shout out, is like the unseen work that really makes the whole machine move forward. As your board may be aware, we have many auditing and compliance measures in behavioral health. This is just one of them. So every year, we go through the External Quality Review Organization review. Advance this slide, please, Johanna. Thank you. So, oh, look, I did fancy stuff. Okay, go ahead. Thank you, you could just put them all up. Okay, so what is an EQRO? So EQRO happens every year for every mental health plan. Also, organized delivery system plans also go through EQRO. So when we join into the organized delivery system July 1st, we will be participating in EQRO, and I believe we're going to have a combined. Yeah, two audits. So EQRO is very valuable to me. I think it's one of the most valuable things that we engage in. It's not an audit, which is kind of unusual. You're very probably familiar with the audit process. Many departments have various audits. We do too. We have many audits in our substance use programs, as well as mental health. We have what's called the triennial, which is once every three years, which is changing. I think that they're going to increase perhaps the frequency of those audits. But again, this is not an audit, which means things that they find don't result in a sanction or any type of recruitment. There's not even really a necessarily corrective action plan or anything like that. It's really a benchmark for us to use to say, how are we doing and how can we improve? And it's really meant to be just a tool for that improvement and to give us a system-level shot, snapshot of what we're doing. So it's, of course, codified that we have to do this. The Department of Healthcare Services subcontracts with an independent entity to conduct these. Presently, it's Behavioral Health Concepts, and I think that they're holding the contract still. And so there's a lot of different information sources that they review in order to complete this review. One of them is they talk to beneficiaries, which is great, right? And so we get beneficiary feedback through this and also a lot through our MHSA, which we'll be coming forward again here soon to give you some findings from that. And our management team review this. We really use it as kind of a roadmap in many ways of where we want to go and how we can improve upon services. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is just a high-level overview comparing year to year. And so this year, we were rated on 26 different items. Those items fall into categories titled access to care, timeliness of care, quality of care, and information systems. So this will show you the number that we partially met and the number that we did not meet between the last two fiscal years. So, you know, it's not the best, it's not the worst, right? There's always room for improvement, and by no means are we unique. Like, this is a pretty, I would say, average and good representation of how counties generally do. It's about what you would expect to see. And so also, I'll ask the board if at any time, you know, of course, if you want to ask questions as a slides or you prefer to reserve your questions for the end. And Ms. Mayer here is obviously our subject matter expert. So we, you know, did better this year and worse this year, depending on the metric. It kind of, it just shifted. I wouldn't say that there was a huge difference year to year, though. Next slide. Perfect. So this is, again, just breaking out some of that information, but in a different way. So last fiscal year, you can also see that we were rated on 26 items. That's the same. We met more of the items this year, two more, which is great. So we made some progress, which we love. It is about, if you were going to do math on it, it's about, you know, 69%. So not that that's math we're going to do, but that's what it is. But it is better than last year. We had one more not met than we did the year before, but we reduced our partials quite a bit, which is nice. So that's where we saw the biggest improvement, is improving on those areas where we partially met, and somehow we were able to push them over the edge and make them fully met. Next slide, please. So as I broke out before, this is one of the items that we have an area for improvement on, and it's regarded to quality of care and ensuring that timeliness data can be tracked throughout the entire system. What does that mean, the entire system? So as your board is well aware, we contract out for a lot of services. And so we do okay on tracking timeliness within our own department, where we control the services, but it's been hard to track that in the entire system of contracted providers. It's a big area for improvement. We're really putting a lot of hope into our new electronic health record, which it is starting to pan out. It had been, you know, as the board is well aware. So we're starting to see some of that work come to fruition. And it is actually really nice to have this semi-statewide electronic health record enterprise because it is specifically geared to meet those metrics for behavioral health, whereas no other system cared about it, really, just to be honest. EHRs don't have to, but this system is geared for behavioral health. So we're hoping very much that we're going to be able to use this platform to collect that data for all of our contracted and network providers because they all have access. They have a login and portal to our system. Vanessa, is there anything else that I missed, or would you clarify?
Well, some of our contracted providers actually don't have access to our electronic health record. They're using their, they prefer to use their own electronic health records. So there's some data integration issues in terms of their timeliness data incorporating into our timeliness data. That was a concern with our previous electronic health care record, and I feel like we have more flexibility with regards to the existing one to implement or incorporate those data sources to be able to report on those timeliness metrics. We're also building up the contractor onboarding and checking-in process so that we ensure that there's a thorough communication loop so that we develop those systems and infrastructure to be able to support those timeliness metric reporting mechanisms.
Thank you so much. And you'll see this, like, issue, yeah, issues related to technology, where it has been insufficient across the board, like, that's going to be a theme. And so a lot of these solutions are technologically based, and we hope to make that work easier. But also, just us coming together and really wrapping around our contracted providers to really be a cohesive network of care is a goal that I've had for a long time, since my program manager days. And so we're starting to see traction and movement on that, in part to innovations in technology. All right, next slide. Okay, so we get beneficiary satisfaction surveys. We're required to issue those every year. They're exactly what they sound like, so beneficiaries of our service can complete a satisfaction survey, and it's one of my favorite pieces of data. So we got a partially met on this because of issues outrolling out the survey, essentially. So we're hoping, again, for a technological solution here where we can integrate it more into our electronic health record, but also other outcome data, as the board is well aware, has been notably absent and difficult to track. So actually, finally, I would say the Department of Healthcare Services has recognized this, and as part of CalAim, I would say, overall, they're moving towards more data accountability for counties. So again, we're not unique in this. This is pretty typical of a county experience. So across the board and across the state, there's attention to these outcome metrics, particularly as regards client care. Anything else you'd like to comment on about this, Vanessa?
The SmartCare Electronic Healthcare Record, we implemented it as a pilot in March of 2023, which seems like a long time ago in retrospect, right? But for a massive electronic healthcare record that is brand-new to California and providing operations for multiple counties in a region with a large subset coming on in July of 2023? Was it 20?
23.
Yeah. So there was a lot of impetus behind other infrastructure development to get clients into care, to be able to do the work that needs to be done to get those clients into care. Reporting kind of got a backseat. And so this is an example of one of those reporting components that we didn't get to visualize in December when EQRO came out, or Behavioral Health Concepts came out and completed their EQRO review. I anticipate, based on what I can see in SmartCare, the movement, the traction behind reporting infrastructure, that we will have some of these requirements met, built into our systems, and we'll have what we need by the next EQRO review. We were just a little bit behind in terms of time and infrastructure development for that to be realized in this review.
Thank you, Vanessa. So one dream that I've had, that I think is going to become a reality, is that aggregate scores for client outcome data, like measures of how, symptoms, right? Like, any kind of symptoms, there's so many different outcome measures. But the ones that are selected by DHS, which are now required, we can look at a client's individual chart over time, like a clinician could pull up their chart, and it'll show a bar graph of how they're reporting their symptoms. That's like one of my big dreams, so you could actually see, are this person getting better or worse, at least on those reported metrics, as well as aggregate for the department? That would be a dream, and I think we're going to be able to see those. So we look forward to being able to present that type of outcome data here within the next year, I would say. Okay, next slide. Okay, so we have another partially met item here, which is related to quality of care. Again, technology is the theme here. So data archive, of course, with the transition into the new electronic health record, where does all the data go from the old one? Well, it so happens that CalAim MHSA developed a solution that actually we already have a fully executed contract for, and I'm sure the implementation of that work is underway now to archive all of that data in a warehouse that is administered by CalAim MHSA so that we have it available to us. So again, I'm thinking that works, it's very likely that we'll meet this at this year's EQRO because that solution will have been implemented.
If I might add, while we will meet this, they've decided to remove this from the criteria for next year's as a goal because it's so vendor-heavy in terms of what is needed. They recognize that the vendor is responsible for all of the future actions, that we've already done what we need to do. So while we will be meeting it, we won't get credit for it next time.
I'm going to refrain from any snarky comments. Okay, about this, it's good to see sanity prevail sometimes. I couldn't do it. Okay, next slide. Information systems. So this is a lot of stuff. Vanessa, will you tell us what a 274 form is?
So the 274 is a report that we, our compliance team completes and submits to our vendor, who then submits to the Department of Healthcare Services on our behalf. It's also closely connected to our provider directories. And what they're looking for is kind of seamless integration between our provider directories and that 274 report so that our directories are reflecting accurate, on-the-spot recognition of who is able to provide services for our clients, because they're looking at these provider directories to identify who their next provider is going to be. So our, again, like she mentioned, technology is one of the challenges that we have here in behavioral health, and that's not just local to Lake County, that's actually consistent across the board. So we are working on implementing technology that can kind of breach that gap. They're looking for a connection between the 274 report and the provider directories, and it just doesn't exist yet. We are working on it through our HIE, our Health Information Exchange, but I believe that right now, they're working on like a two-year roadmap, project roadmap for those types of deliverables, and that isn't in this year's project roadmap yet. So they're still developing a lot of this infrastructure, technological infrastructure. But I think we're ahead of the game when it comes to the small counties.
I agree. Thank you. Next slide. Okay, this one is related to the Health Information Exchange. So a Health Information Exchange is a mechanism by which different healthcare entities can communicate real-time data about patients. And so in a perfect world, like, let's say we had a client and they were seen in the hospital, even for a non-behavioral health condition, it would, like, when our clinician pulled up their chart in our EHR, it would pop up a flag, like, it would notify us that something had happened, which you can understandably see that's important to clinical care. It happens all the time that we don't even know that people have got It happens all the time that we don't even know that people have gone to the hospital, right? So this is trying to bridge that gap and make seamless whole person care through a technological solution. It's also a requirement, we're required as part of the Behavioral Health Quality Improvement Program in CalAim to have a Health Information Exchange. We partially met this, we don't really have a functional Health Information Exchange right now, and that's because initially in the Behavioral Health Quality Improvement Program, we were racing towards the finish line where we had to have an HIE like onboarded. So we selected one that was in our region. HIES are regionalized, and the one that's in our region is called SAC Valley MedShare. So we onboarded with them. As it turns out, they were not able to connect to the interface of our new EHR. Nobody knew that until it was time to do that wizardry of whatever they do behind the scenes because it's backend to backend connections. So moving forward, SmartCare itself and CalAim HSA has developed their own HIE solution, and that is moving forward. Is there anything else that?
Well, just that we, we only had one option for our HIE. We only had one HIE that was active within our region, and that was SAC Valley MedShare. CalMesa's SmartCare solution didn't exist at that time. They started development after we signed on with SAC Valley MedShare, or maybe right around the same time. So this option that we are moving towards now didn't exist back then. We did the best decision-making with the options that were available at the time, and unfortunately, that didn't, that didn't really result in something that was viable. And we're pivoting and working with a better solution, we believe, going forward.
All right, next slide.
It didn't meet all interoperability requirements. It only met the portion that was required for BHQUIP for a certain specific type of funding. They didn't realize that until later on.
That's a common theme. Okay, so billing, there's been obvious billing issues. We've talked about it extensively here. We're moving forward. Of course, you can see that our billing error rate has been very low. That's because we have a very competent billing team. So now we've had a lot of solutions and fixes in the system where we're starting to see our Medi-Cal payments come in. We anticipate that will continue. And so I don't, I don't believe that this is going to come up again. I think we will have resolved that by the time EQRO. And just, EQRO takes place typically in December for our county. So we'll expect to have a good outcome on this report in December regarding billing. All right, next slide. So this is a summary of our strengths, which is cool because they do note where you're doing well, and of course, there's always areas for improvement. Every year, year after year, our peer support services get rave reviews from our beneficiaries, from the community. One of our staff, you know, what is this phrase? He says that they're the jewel in the crown of behavioral health, and I, and I really do, I think that's such a nice sentiment because they do provide very unique services. And we're also very unique as a county that has right now four, but we will in the future have five again. Most similarly sized counties have none or one. So we're really ahead of the curve and continues to be an excellent resource for our community. Our timeliness for first offered appointments, like by the time you call and request a service and then you get it, it's better. It's improving. It's always our goal, like my goal is same day service. I have a dream where you call that day and you get an intake, which I think can become a reality, but of course, that process is iterative, so we are making progress there. We're really trying to have a lot of strategy. So one is paid clinical supervision for clinicians, and that helps us grow our own clinicians. And when you have a lot of clinicians, you have less access issues. I mean, simple math, right? If you have demand, you have to produce the providers to meet that demand, so that's one strategy. We also contract out all of our psychiatry and a lot of other services. So we have been increasingly relying on contracted providers for those specialty type of services that require either licensure or a doctor, just in an attempt to meet the needs of our community, and so they gave us kudos for that. We actually did quite well in implementing many CalAim initiatives. We were ahead of the curve, I would say, not just among like-sized counties, but in the state. So we got recognition for that, which is nice. And we do a pretty good job of outreach and engagement with our community partners, particularly with our BIPOC community with a focus on our Native American tribes and people, and also the unhoused and our Latinx population. So that continues to be a big focus. In fact, our deputy director of clinical services, April Gambra, she holds office hours every Friday at the Department of Social Services at Big Valley, and we're continuing to build those relationships with underserved and marginalized communities. All right, next slide. Thank you, Johanna. All right, so of course, lots of opportunities for improvement. We did not, performance improvement plans, mental health plans are required to implement performance improvement plans, at least two. One is a clinical, for example, like if I do this type of service, is it going to result in less depression? It's just a general example. Nonclinical means little technological fixes or process fixes that ultimately improve the system. So we had a nonclinical performance improvement plan, but because of the competing demands of the Behavioral Health Quality Improvement Program, which required other PIPs, like there was so many PIPs, and we're not unique in this either. So we're going to get back on track through the BHQUIP actually, to implement standardized performance improvement plans across our system. And can you remind me, Vanessa, what does QUAPI stand for again?
Quality Assessment and Performance Improvement Plan. So it's like a quality improvement work plan that we develop every year, and it kind of goes, it trends over our goals for the last three years. So we try to have workable goals that are trackable and measurable and work towards improving those goals. And those are, that plan is linked on our website. So they're looking for, I think at the time of the review, our, our compliance team was, was working at about 50% capacity, and we're a small but mighty crew. So we were feeling that or suffering from that absence of available bodies to complete that kind of work. So the QUAPI work plan got pushed out due to other competing projects. But in terms of going back to the clinical PIP, we hired a, we contracted with a provider for a full-time clinical compliance staffer. So she can help us develop the clinical PIP this year that we didn't have that kind of resource of support last year with. And in terms of the QUAPI work plan, we are actively implementing all of the recommendations from the last EQRO into our QUAPI work plan, including expanding it to include DMCODS goals as we move into the organized delivery system in July. So we're really trying to respond to this while also ensuring that it meets all the needs that we'll have in the future.
Thank you, Vanessa. Timeliness data, that's been an issue that's plagued us in a lot of other counties for some time, is that if you don't have a definition, it's hard to track to it. And so we're working on that, and in part, it's due to, we would ask DHTS for guidance, and we would get different answers. So we're working on that. DHTS has also recognized that they've been inconsistent in their messaging, which is nice. And so I think this year we'll see improvement on that opportunity for improvement in tracking timeliness metrics and have better, more viable data. Some issues with access to informational materials in Spanish, and so that's, that's actually pretty easy to fix. And so I think actually our team has already done a lot of fixes around that and making sure that we have informing materials, that Spanish is our threshold language, so that one is going to look good for us for next year. And lastly, some key informant, they do key informant interviews. Express communication, you know, we've had a lot of leadership transition, and also notably, we have a big gap in leadership in our mental health program. We're just closed our latest recruitment for mental health program manager. We have had two vacancies vacant for, since I left as a program manager, I want to say, which is rough. And so I think a lot of the issues that we see on the mental health side are due to the fact that we literally don't have a program manager. And so we're continuing to work on that. And nothing is ever perfect, but it has definitely been a big job. I've increased all staff meetings to monthly. Some of you may seen it here. This is a very convenient space, actually, and I like it for meetings. So we're doing our best to wrap around our staff and make them feel that they have the ability to communicate with all levels of leadership, and hopefully we will rank better on that next time.
We've also implemented monthly clinical office hours, well, every four weeks, clinical office hours with our staff to give them an opportunity to strategize issues within the system and connect together to share resources and get information and get trained on clinical areas of development. So we are working on improving their availability for communicating with management teams through as many means, measures as possible.
That has been a goal since I, again, was a program manager in 2018, 19, was having a better connection between our clinical side and the folks that do services and our bean counters, for lack of, right? Because you got to know what the others are doing, right? Clinicals have to understand what we need from compliance, and compliance has to understand the realities of clinicals. So I think we've made a lot of progress on that this year, and I'm hoping that we'll continue to bridge that gap. And I believe that that concludes our presentation. That should be the last slide. Did I get it? Oh, I think so. Yep. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much both for your presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Supervisor Paeska.
Are you at 20% vacancy?
I think we're about 19.
Okay.
Not to split hairs, but.
Okay.
Mostly in our clinical positions, and then of course, that vacant program manager position is a big one.
How's recruitment going for that?
For that?
Yeah.
Not super great.
Is that hard to fill?
It's hard to fill, I think. I mean, I would, I don't know about the definition. I couldn't, I, I don't know. I'd have to check on that, but I know we've had at least one failed recruitment.
Okay.
In recent memory. It's just tough, you know, and it requires, you got to have the right person there, otherwise you're going to do more harm than good. So I'm very cognizant about that in leadership positions, but it's a rough one.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Gray?
Just thank you, very thorough presentation. If you love acronyms, you got to love BH. But thanks to the presentation, I followed along. I followed the bouncing ball as best I could. I don't know how you do it on a daily basis. I would, I would drown in all the acronyms, but what I saw in there for the positive takeaways, we're very positive. We are ahead of the curve on some things. We have challenges, AKA opportunities, as you put it, and I think this just highlights again that we are in a positive trend, you know, and that's no disrespect to the trends we were that preceded, but I was very happy to hear this report.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. Sorry, I didn't mean for that to sound final. Number one, highlighting the peer support centers. I think it's continuously being highlighted by these annual reports on the accessibility to the, to the common community that we all belong to. They're spread out around the county, so they're easily accessible to all, and that's greatly appreciated. And I know that we talk in different ways of what kind of different accesses we want there, especially when looking for sheltering and things like that as well. So always appreciated, and good to see the state noticing this as well. And also being the highlight of what we do that others are going to try and copy. It's not just something that we do, it's something that people are looking up to us and saying, how did you get this accomplished for such a small county? The meetings that you said you brought back monthly, I just want to highlight that in the report, it talks about the positivity of those meetings. I don't think you hit on that, and I want to make sure to highlight that because I think that is a good morale boost. It's a good way to make your staff feel appreciated for who they're working for and why they're doing the work that they're doing because it's not easy work, and I'm sure it can get easy to get lost in the weeds of all the work that is being asked of you. Definitely interested in outcomes analysis. I think they've kind of changed their language. I know a couple of years ago, it said, you're making decisions without data. Now they're just saying we need to get outcomes data in order to have a better analysis. And I know that you were saying from individual to department, I'm also very interested in contracts. If we can get outcomes on contracts, then I can really understand which contracts are working and impacting our community members the most and which ones are we not getting the outcomes of. And I know that there's, within each contract, there's a link for reporting, and to me that we have the scope of service of what we're asking you to do, that can easily, well, not easily, because I think it's difficult to figure out how to analyze outcomes and what we need to be asking for, but that can be part of the contracts of, these are the outcomes we're going to be asking you to identify, and then put that into the report that the link leads them to in order for us to be able to obtain that. Just because I, with all the different contracts, we have varying different costs, being able to really analyze each one and be able to figure out which one is truly providing the benefits we're looking for, and which ones are just needed, and maybe it's a difficult task to get the outcomes that we need. I think there's explanations that can go along with that.
Yes, and that's, that's been our goal for a long time, and it's, it's a sophistication that will evolve, I hope, but that, I would love to see that. Vanessa, I know you're.
Yeah, I'm, I'm like itching to respond to this. Thank you for bringing this up. It's a really important point. But our electronic health record, it's a regional partnership, right? Many other counties have jumped on to SmartCare, and because of that, the impetus behind utilizing that electronic health record is kind of, it's growing within our contractor community as well. We're onboarding more of our contractors than ever before in SmartCare, and some are already in there that weren't previously in there, that kind of thing. So we're, as, as they get into SmartCare, we're going to be able to see this utilization in ways that we've never had before. It'll be kind of seamless, just really at our fingertips versus trying to kind of implement their reporting mechanisms into ours. So it, good point, we do, we did have a basis behind that process. It was convoluted and kind of complicated, but I really, really, I see a lot of improvement moving forward with regard to SmartCare and our access to that data going forward.
And as one last comment, it's, it's, I think the state's goal, and I would, and we will see this too, building into contact or contracts, funding that's tied to quality outcomes is going to be a nice tool. We were ahead of the curve from other counties going through payment reform because we already billed, we already had our contractors bill us fee for service, like do a service get paid? That actually wasn't largely the case across the state. So that's a lot of what you heard about counties struggling with payment reform is that they were just paying, like here's a set, you get this money, and like basically there was no outcomes tied to it, which we have really not done very many of those. So we're going to continue to refine that where specific outcomes are tied to perhaps incentive, you know, bonuses is a potential for them to use and grow their staff and do whatever they need to do. And also conversely, you know, looking at, I don't want to say sanctions, but for lack of a better way of putting it, sanctions for not meeting certain quality benchmarks. And that's what we're going to continue to see at the state level, especially with the current governance administration is very focused on those outcome measures.
And it seems similar of a change to what happened with our hospitals, where readmission rates are now being reviewed. We want to take care of people, not continuously see them again and again, or else we're not doing the job that we should be taking care of. And so I think those outcomes will, will help us better understand how we're doing the work that we're doing. There were some, you were a little too far ahead for the CalAim, where you started billing accidentally under the CalAim code. I take all that has been resolved, and those claims that were being rejected between March and July have been resolved and have been paid for?
Yeah, we finally gotten cleanup on those.
Okay. And I also feel like the, I like the idea of the centralization of all of the data and the processes because now it's also continuity of care where if they're somewhere else, they can access that level of information. So it's not completely separated treatments that are happening. It's really, you can see the full scope of that individual that, no matter where they are in the county, no matter what facility they're going to. So I look forward to that being fully implemented, but I can't help but parallel with the website for the Affordable Healthcare Act where it just did not function properly at all. And I see this as the same growing pains that the California, the state government is working on to try and get those programs to work. I'm very interested in the potential of updates on some of these things that are works in progress, like the PIPs, the outcomes analysis, and the QUAPI, which sounds like a New York way of saying coffee, which is really weird every time I hear it. But I'd love to maybe six months from now, get a review of where we are so that then we can see, rather than waiting annually for the next QERO, because I think part of our job is how can we support you in getting to your destination, more so than just hearing what you've done and what you're attempting to do. So if that's okay with you, and if that's okay with the board, I'd love to, at least on the things that you're working on that was identified as work in progress, just to kind of get an idea of where things are and how things are moving.
I'd be excited to show you all the quality improvement work that we're working on. We'll have that done in the next month or two.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yeah, I mean, I do agree that we should, you know. Yeah, I mean, I do agree that we shouldn't, you know, we, we talk a lot about getting updates, but it seems like every time you're before us, we're asking for more and more updates and you're already bringing so many things before us. So I need, we need to make sure that we're not giving you a workload that is not sustainable or keeping you from other things.
Agreed. Agreed.
Happy to come back at the pleasure of the board.
Those are my comments and I really appreciate the highlighted stuff as well. You guys are doing a fabulous job on a very difficult topic to engage in and take care of. And C A O Parker?
Yes, thank you Chair. In the same vein of what Supervisor Pyska mentioned, maybe on your monthly updates, you have a small, you can continue doing that, whatever updates you have for those, these current and ongoing items, just a thought to save you some time.
And you're mentioning the newsletter?
No, she's good.
No, I'm back to your board about our money. So absolutely, would love to highlight things there. Thank you so much for that suggestion.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon?
Thank you for the report today too, but I just want to continue.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Make sure to keep working with human resources. We're trying to do everything we can to get those hard filled positions in there. Department of Social Services, behavioral health, so important because the critical need for the people that are asking for these services. So continue that, have the conversations, think outside of the box if you need to do some of that stuff. And I know this board's worked with different departments and other things to help kind of move that process along and the administration office. So getting those hard filled positions in these critical needs, departments are really important. So just continue that. I know you have our support. I can't speak for the whole board, but myself and I've seen this board do that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Did I open it up for public comment? I have not.
No, you haven't.
So let me do that real quick so that you can get up one last time. Are there any public comments on this item?
I actually have no comment.
Please come on up.
I'm in primary care, but my question is, is this division also in charge of emergency services?
We offer crisis services.
I'm just wondering like if tribal health obviously has their own division of behavioral health. I feel like we're well supported in that aspect, but occasionally I do have patients and families who have instances where a patient may be a harm to their self or others and so we need immediate crisis intervention.
Absolutely, we do that. Happy to connect with you, but I'm happy also to broadcast again our mobile crisis benefit. So this is a behavioral health wide benefit. So even people struggling with substance use issues who are feeling at risk of relapse, I'll use this example because it really just shows the flexibility of a benefit, but even children in a, in an argument with their family and it might escalate and we're trying to prevent, really we're trying to prevent hospitalization all the way up to people needing that level of intervention. The phone number is 800-900-2075. It is a 24/7, 365 day a year service and we are here for the community and happy to come out and I'm happy to connect with you outside as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment or question and I see no further hands in the Zoom room or in the chamber, so I will bring it back and say thank you very much for your presentation and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And so I know that we have folks in the audience that are here for 7.5 wondering if the board wants to tackle that or take a lunch or tackle that and then take a lunch.
It'd probably be better taking a lunch.
Okay, so let's go ahead and take our lunch and we will come back at 1:21. Let's just make that 1:20. All right, welcome back. We are going to continue our open session with the item that we left off with, which is 7.3, consideration of First Amendment to the At-Cost Project Reimbursement and Indemnity Agreement between the County of Lake and Lotus Land Investment Holdings, Inc. for county permit processing of the Maha Guanoc Valley Mixed Use Development Project. Director Turner?
Thank you, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. For those of you who may have forgotten or might not have been paying attention a few years ago, the Maha Guanoc Valley is a 16,000 acre multi-use resort residential project, development project. It has many moving parts. It was approved by the board in 2020 and then appealed to the Superior Court. Since the, the judge made a decision finding one area of the environmental impact report was insufficient and since that time, after the board rescinded all of the actions it had taken, the developer has been working on addressing the concerns that came out of that judgment. And now it's back. For those who haven't read the project description yet, it is, it includes, let's see, 400 hotel units. And I just want to give you a brief overview just to bring you up to speed because aside from that, this amendment agreement really isn't all that interesting. So I'll save that for a second. So 450 residential units, 1,400 residential estate villas. It also includes five subdivisions, one of which is just for workforce housing, which is offsite but still in Middletown. General Plan Amendment, rezones, modification to the Middletown Area Plan, General Plan of Development, a specific plan of development and an environmental impact report. And I might have missed a thing or two. So in 2020, because of the complexity of this project, intaking the fees were handled slightly different than our normal way. Typically.
Time out.
Pause.
Time out call on the back.
It appears that we are not well connected to either Facebook or Zoom. Something is wrong. I apologize.
I can start all over in just a second.
But we are going to take a 10-minute break to try and figure it out.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. We're just having a little technical difficulty with Zoom. I want to make sure that we can be heard now.
Yes.
We can be heard in the chambers. Can we be heard in Zoom?
Uh huh.
Oh, yes. Okay, then it looks like, let me make sure, one thing on participants. Allow panelists to start video. Okay, we've got it. Okay, my apologies, I'm not sure what happened to Zoom, but we are back.
Thank you for your patience, everybody. Let's wait for the video to come on. Perfect. So we are going to attempt to summarize, but not necessarily have to start all over from scratch, what had already been said for item 7.3. Again, let me just read it out since we seem to be starting all over here. Consideration of First Amendment to the At-Cost Project Reimbursement and Indemnity Agreement between the County of Lake and Lotus Land Investment Holdings, Inc. for county permit processing of the Maha Guanoc Valley Mixed Use Development Project.
Thank you, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. Anyone who missed the previous project description is more than welcome to reach out to our department and we'd be happy to email it to them. But moving forward, the permit fees in the planning division, with very few exceptions, are dealt with on a cost recovery basis. So that means the, the permit fee is actually a deposit and the time spent and expenses of that project are then, are carried against that balance. Because of the multiple moving parts with the Maha Guanoc Valley development, we handled it a little differently. And with the original project in 2020, the board approved an agreement that established a fund balance from which not just planning, but all of the, all of the stakeholder agencies would draw their staff time and expense from that overall balance. That balance stayed, or that agreement stayed in effect while the developer was, was working on their next submission. And so it has dwindled down to just about nothing. This amendment will replenish that balance, keep it going through this next round of permit processes. And also I updated a little bit of the wording so that it more accurately reflected what could be different staff fees depending on different departments. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much for your patience and your presentation of the item. Any questions or comments regarding this item?
Just glad to see you coming back. That's it.
I have a brief question. I believe based on the information provided that this project description is the same and that the only difference is the difference from what came down from the courts?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure since this was an amendment rather than a new agreement, but just I wanted to at least ask the question. So I appreciate that and that's all I have. And if there's nothing further, let's open it up for public comment. If you're in Zoom, please use the raise hand function. If you're in the chamber, come on up to the mic. Seeing nothing in either one, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the First Amendment to the At-Cost Project Reimbursement and Indemnity Agreement between the County of Lake and Lotus Land Investment Holdings, Inc. for the county permit processing of the Maha Guanoc Valley Mixed Use Development Project and authorize the chair to sign.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are going to skip, since we have Director Turner here, to item 7.6, consideration of proposed formation of eight local area plan advisory committees to support the Lake County 2050 update process. Director Turner?
Thank you, Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. Historically, Lake County has updated their local area plans one at a time because they're time intensive and demanding on staff resources. This time, Lake County 2050 is a more ambitious project. It includes an update of the general plan and all eight local area plans at the same time. In December, the board established the General Plan Advisory Committee, which is a group of 15 from all over the county to oversee and make recommendations to the general plan drafts, the draft local area plans and the draft E I R. There are a number of issues that require robust discussion at a community planning area level. Because of that, the request before you today is to consider establishing one local area plan advisory committee per planning area. That would be the creation of eight new committees that would review, discuss, consider the planning area specific items that could include modification of the planning area boundaries, modification of the community growth boundaries and different land use issues that could come up. Those advisory committee recommendations would then be brought to the General Plan Advisory Committee for their consideration. Staff recommends that these individual bodies be no, no larger than nine. And also in the staff report, there was a recommendation for specialties in each of these. Across the, across all eight would be a tribal representative and an environmental representative. And then it starts to sort of fine tune or customize per area plan based on if there's a municipal advisory council or two or none, like the Riviera's has four HOAs but no advisory council. So, so that's where they start to shift a little bit. Kelseyville Area Plan has a membership specific to the ag industry and then filled in with between three and five public members at large that would live within that, that planning Staff does recognize that this would create an additional burden, sorry Johanna, in admin as well as logistical management of the different meetings. So our goal is to synchronize the, these local area plan advisory council meetings as much into the existing timeline as possible. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Supervisor Pyska?
So what do you think about the frequency of these meetings? And I'm guessing it's the duration of the three-year project?
Correct. Well, it would be less than that. We, we would need to, it's more like a two-year term because it's specifically focused during the draft periods of the local area plan. So probably next two years.
And frequency?
It's kind of going to depend on each individual planning area. Some may not have any recommendations of changes. Others might have a need for, for ongoing meetings. So we're going to have to feel that out without killing off staff.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at trying to recruit volunteers as we've got our advisory councils. Today we've, we're seating an advisory council, but we have a lot of people that are interested in and so I'm just hoping that we can kind of capture some of that enthusiasm.
Let's start with three meetings and more if needed.
Okay. Okay.
The timeline for this, if it, if the board does create them today, is I'd like to extend the period for collecting the applications until after that first kickoff meeting of the planning areas all through the middle of April. So bring it back to the board for appointments hopefully in May because I think that the interest generated of those community meetings at first will also generate interest in participating in these advisory committees.
Yeah. I think if people are signing up though, they're, they'll probably want to understand this is going to be, it sounds like three meetings, but I think it's potentially more. It'd be good information for them to have.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this forward. It's a lot of committees and a lot of people on these committees. So to the proposed structure, if I were to parse the Lakeport Area Plan, have an agricultural seat, I think designated would be appropriate. I guess I want to think outside the box a little bit because this is a lot of, a lot of cat herding in a lot of different areas, some of which have good infrastructure to hold meetings and gather input, some that don't have quite as good. And in the Lakeport Area Plan example, for example, have a definite city mouse, country mouse kind of dynamic going on. So you're going to have to get feedback from different groups within that area. And just like with the General Plan Advisory Committee as a whole that we talked about and then our regional advisory councils, there's some overhead organizational with organizing these committees, then holding the meetings, noticing them, if they're, if these are going to be Brown Act bodies, and I assume they are.
They are not. They are advisory committees gathered for a certain period of time for a specific purpose and then they will be disbanded. They're not ongoing and nor are they area, nor are they areas of specialization.
Okay.
Similar to G P A C.
So these are proposed as time limited ad hoc committees?
Exactly.
Okay. It's still a heavy lift comparing, contrasts with say a larger number of scoping meetings in various places within the area plans. You don't have a formal committee input process or people taking votes and recommendations. And maybe that's just my own naivete or unfamiliarity with what deliverables you want out of this process. But we end up having trouble recruiting. We have trouble getting people in the proper seats. There's another item on today's agenda where we're going to re-categorize another person on a different committee and, but the end goal of this is just to solicit public input from as wide a swath as you can. So can, can you just explain to me why we have a general plan advisory committee? We have a bunch of municipal advisory councils already set up to provide some regional input. Is there something in the general plan update process specific to the area plan updates that requires or rewards the formation of area plan specific advisory committees?
Yes, thank you for asking. So the general plan advisory committee oversee, is overseeing quite a broad update. The concern that, that grew in me as I was, as I've been working on planning this project and overseeing its, its progress is that I don't want our Lake County 2050 to get to the final draft and not have the community buy-in because people don't feel that they've had enough time to really hash out the community vision for the next 20 years. We have three workshops per planning area and the input is meant to be broader than the municipal area councils. They were a great place for our kickoff meetings to start, but we've always had the goal of going wider and getting greater participation, in which case that's why there's a, a position for the municipal area council within each, I call them lay packs, but, but it's broader than that as well. And so this is an attempt to really get into the, the nuts and bolts of that community vision for that specific planning area for the next 20 years and not have it just be limited to what the town council thinks. Without that community buy-in, I would hate to think that Lake County 2050 would not have the would not have the synchronization and the granular detail envisioning that's required for it to be a valuable deliverable for the next 20 years.
Thank you for that. And I guess my immediate follow-up to that is if we're going to lock and load and follow this, I don't see a budget request with this. So is it your intention that you're going to absorb... Do you have bandwidth within your existing department or the existing funding for the general plan update to pull this off? Because again, this is a lot of cat herding. And if we need to support you or support these councils, help you obtain meeting space, help you advertise these meetings, or just to kind of track staff time in supporting this function? Because I think the General Plan Advisory Committee itself is a big lift, and you have a consultant helping with that. Is this included in the current contract with the consultant? Or are you going to be shouldering this on yourself?
We will be shouldering this within our department. It is not part of the scope of work. And we're so early in the three-year process that I'm trying to reserve any wiggle room in our budget for later when it becomes crucial.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska?
I think this is a good move because in the past, if you've read the area plans, there was 12 people appointed that met monthly for sometimes years. And a heavy lift by volunteers. And so this is a modification of that. But I think we're still going to achieve that community visioning but without putting that workload on the volunteers. So I think it's a worthwhile investment. And I have three that I got to deal with, work through. So I think it's going to be a busy time for all of us. But you know, this is how we have to do it. I think this is going to be the better way to get that community-led engagement that you might not receive at the municipal advisory councils.
Any further comments or questions regarding this item? Supervisor Green?
Just when we get closer to motion, I am going to seek an agricultural seat.
Okay.
And just for clarity, would you then be removing one at-large position? Okay.
Seems to be the impact of the others of making those different choices. Did I hear a... Please, CAO Parker?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Director Turner, given the timeline that you just proposed turnaround on the applications, we may need some assistance in the redaction efforts given the number of applications and continuing to do our day-to-day.
We have already been in conversation with admin staff to support that effort.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Be nice if we can automate that automatically.
Can't we just use a Sharpie? I mean, is that the old way of doing it? Maybe I'm showing my age.
Can be a request. We ask for Adobe. Quick question. I know it says on there the folks that reside in the area, but the area plan doesn't always match the municipal advisory map. And would it be only people that live within the area? And I don't know if there's the possibility of some of the advisories not having people that live specifically in that area. I doubt that would be the case. But just wanted to check in for business owners and for those that are representative of the municipal advisory. They're all... They would all have to meet the requirement of residing in the area of the area plan.
If that be the will of the board, that is how I drafted it.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay. And then last question is for the Lakeport one and for the Shoreline one, it includes, at this moment in time, the cities. Will those be carved out? Or will residents of those two cities be eligible to put in an application?
There are a number of points during this overall Lake County 2050 process that the cities are included. This would not be one of them. They're not... They are not meant to be included in the planning area because the cities have their own community visioning process.
Yeah. I appreciate that. I figured that was the case. I know it's been discussed in the past, but currently, the maps definitely overlap to show that it does offer all those areas. So that's perfect. Just wanted to be clear on that for when we get applications. There is nothing further. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Please come up to the microphone or raise your hand in Zoom. Seeing none, let's bring it back. And I think direction's been given. There's a change to the Lakeport one. Anything else? Supervisor Green?
No, just your last point. That's a good point. I didn't even think about it. Yeah, cities have their own general plans and their own update process. But in our county process, as we look at the area plans and the general plan as a whole for the county, do we not even examine anything within the city footprint? Because there's definitely some intersection of interests there affecting development, if nothing else. So are we drawing hard lines in the sand? Because if I do have a Lakeport city business owner with interest also in the county, yeah, where do we draw those lines? So I guess first question first. Is this general plan update process exclusive to the unincorporated county territories?
It is.
All right. Thank you.
However, the line is the board's... Sorry. To draw. So if you wanted to not exclude someone who had business interests in the unincorporated but lived in the city, that's... This is fully up to the will of the board. This was just my first draft, my best suggestions. Typically, though, we are working closely with the cities on the countywide evacuation plan and the climate of vulnerability analysis. Those we are doing as regional. However, we have not spoken to the cities regarding any sort of overlap within the community visioning process.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, but the cities will have the ability to provide input on the EIR as it gets all processed, just like they do currently if there is a project that is adjacent to their city limits?
They are welcome to provide any input they feel is appropriate.
Yeah. So I feel that as an agency of that type, that they already have the ability to provide input. They shouldn't be in the steering seat because it is not their area to control. But providing input will be available to them at one point or another. And so I think that, to me, is the right place for them to be.
So I guess my suggestion and clarification for a business owner is that when we're parsing those on the applications, if they do reside outside the area plan area, but they can identify on that application a business that is located within the area. I don't know how to indicate that especially, but I just want to make sure... This is in our Scotch Valley Advisory Council bylaws. So if somebody has a business interest in Scotch Valley and they want to serve on the council, they're eligible to do so. So I don't know if you need specific direction from us, but I think that clarification may be helpful. If any business owner within any of these area plans wants to apply, they can. But we're going to need some information about which business they're establishing eligibility with to make sure that that business interest lies within the area plan.
I could add those instructions in our press release that business owner membership, please indicate address of your business.
If there's consensus.
And I think that we should and would probably know the applicants and should be able to explain on our own when introducing who we would want to see on each one of those area plans, to describe, yes, they don't reside there, but they own a business. I think that's something that we can handle on our own and helping in the process.
This is 72 new applicants, so... I am going to rely on your expertise.
I would just prefer that they live in the area. I think you want that experience of not just having a business but residing in the area. And that's my preference. There's plenty of business owners, I think, that you could find.
Well, I would suggest, I guess, for... For the Lakeport area, I think that's the one that probably is impacted the most. I don't know. We'll see if there's a problem. But I would suggest most businesses are probably going to be within the area of the city, and that's already canceled out. But that doesn't mean that it cancels out all businesses, obviously, since there's businesses outside of the area. But I would agree. Wherever you're going to be impacted is what I would like to see as the decision-maker of assisting and advising on how that area plan should look. That way, you know that it's a personal impact, not a business and financial impact only. These are long-term ramifications. So I would agree with you.
So I'll add. So on the UL-Nice potential for that, can we move one of the at-larges to Worth and then put one UL, one Nice? Because there's two different representatives for the area, if that makes sense?
Oh, yeah. So Worth would get two. One would be in Upper Lake and one would be in Nice.
Yeah. Kind of like how you have SIRF and EARTH. The same type of thing because Upper Lake and Nice are somewhat different. So that would help with there. And I assumed when you had ag at the end of the table, I assumed that they all were. And I was fine with that in my...
It was actually just Kelseyville.
Okay.
I didn't think about Lakeport. Sorry about that. That's a good point.
But I'm fine with UL because there's spots in Upper Lake and Nice, and then even in the Shoreline where that can be filled with someone that's in ag as well.
Okay. So add an ag and take at-large down to three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
No. I like it the way it's proposed at this point. And yeah, we're going to have to weed through all these applications. But I think it answers more questions for our community members at our advisory councils, you know, as we did the GPAC. But this also gives us that opportunity to really get down. And my two, Lower Lake Action Committee Group and the Middletown Area Town Hall, just adding those extra folks and extra eyes on those things that need to be done. All the things that need to be updated on the area plan. Electronic signage, all the little things that have changed over the past 20 years.
Absolutely. Do you feel you have clear direction?
If I may just read it back?
Yeah, of course.
Upper Lake-Nice is changing to have two members from Worth, one from Upper Lake, one from Nice, with the addition of an agricultural representative and three at-large. Lakeport is changing to add one agriculture representative down to four at-large. And the business owner must reside within the planning area, whether or not the business is located in that planning area.
And if I can just clarify that, I think everyone on the list would need to reside within the designated area plan, not just the business owners.
Right. Okay.
That's mine. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Got it.
Just wanted to make sure it wasn't just that one. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for bringing this to us. And I think we're good.
Do we need a motion?
No, just direction to staff. We're going to create the committees at a later time because we're not...
I think we made GPAC by motion. If you wouldn't mind just making a motion to establish the eight area local area...
Let me check with Mr. Guentevano just to make sure. Based on the fact that it does have proposed composition, is a motion to approve the creation of each one of these LAPACs, as it's been aptly named? Would that be appropriate within the confines of this agenda item?
Yes. So and just for clarification for Director Turner, were there any changes to be made on the SIRF... Oh, rather, the Shoreline area?
In the Shoreline area, as far as municipal area councils, we have one membership position for SIRF and one for EARTH. So I think we're covered, and I did not receive any recommendations for amendments on that.
I think the only changes is the fact that the city limits are not available for membership within is the only comments that were made.
So if it's your board's option, the motion would be to establish the eight local area plan advisory committees as outlined in the staff memo and the board memo and with the revisions incorporated coming out of this... Coming out of the discussion of this item. And direction to staff to advertise for the LAPAC vacancies.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go backwards now to item 7.4. Consideration of changing seat designation from crop grower to organic farmer for committee member Bruce Merrilies on the Lake County Ag Advisory Committee. And B, consideration of appointments to the Lake County Ag Advisory Committee. I know it says Clerk of the Board, but I do want to pass it on to our supervisor members from the Ag Advisory Committee in case they wanted to add anything else.
No, we were just trying to recruit for the seats, and the organic farmer is sometimes difficult to fill. So Bruce Merrilies suggested that he be considered for that designation.
Okay. I do want to add that I was stopped by Sharon Zoller, who was not able to make it for this afternoon session, stating that the Ag Advisory Choice would be Jennifer Smith from the list.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think we were at that yet. I thought we were just talking about him. A.
Oh, I read both, so I wasn't sure.
Okay. Yes, Jennifer Smith, but we have three applicants. They're all three cannabis. It's been difficult to fill the seats, so I wouldn't mind appointing Carolyn Hillman for the processor seat as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Yeah, there's a seat open for Ag Processor and a seat open for Crop Grower, and then part A is just Merrily changing the designation of that seat that already is...
Yeah, we currently have two crop growers and one, or three vacancies. Two are crop growers and one's a processor. So if we appoint Jennifer Smith and Carolyn Hillman, then we'll just have one vacancy.
Four. What would the one vacancy be left for?
I think we leave it open, because we're already appointing two people with cannabis. And I think it'll be a little heavy on the cannabis.
Okay. I would, of course, Quincy Jackson's in my district, so I would, he would be my choice.
Okay.
Yeah, but...
Well, I mean, we could just fill them all, since this is, you know, we've been recruiting for the last couple of months. We could just...
That's where I'm at.
Just do them all?
Yeah, and I think Jennifer would probably fall under processor in the breadth of our operations, so...
Any other comments?
No.
I want to say that she only has a cultivation license, but I could be incorrect, and maybe I haven't been keeping up on what's been approved and not approved. But also, I don't think that's what she's requesting to be added as a member.
Well, she left a blank on her application, but state cultivation licenses, by their definition, include the processing of the cultivated product, and...
We have someone here with processor.
Who's that?
Carolyn Hillman.
One of the things, too, I'll add, just to back some of why I wanted to choose Quincy as well, is because I know that, you know, it's been said he does cannabis, but I know he does cattle, and I think he does gardens as well. So I know it's not just, he's not just all cannabis. So that's why I mentioned my support for him.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with all three, then.
Anything else? Open it up for the public. I see no hands up in the Zoom room and no one rushing to the microphone in the chamber. And bringing it back for action.
Want me to move?
Go ahead.
So we're doing A, too, right? So A?
Yes.
Okay, so a motion to approve changing seat designation from Crop Grower to Organic Farmer for committee member Bruce Merrilies on the Lake County Ag Advisory Committee? Do you want it at a time or both? Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
And then I motion to appoint Jennifer Smith, this is Crop Grower, right? Carolyn Hillman, Ag Processor, and Quincy Jackson, Crop Grower, for the three vacancies on the Ag Advisory Committee as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to item 7.5. Consideration of appointments to the Big Valley Advisory Council in the Middletown Cemetery District. Let's maybe just start with the Middletown Cemetery District, just to move that out of the way, and then we can have the larger discussion on BEVAC. Any comments? All right, open it up for the public. Any comments on this item? And let's bring it back.
Move to appoint Susie Knowles to the Middletown Cemetery District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay, let's open up the discussion on the number of applications that we received for BEVAC. And I'll allow for Supervisor Pyska or Supervisor Green to start us off.
Okay. Well, I'm delighted that we have so many applicants. And in light of the fact that we need area plan volunteers, I think that's great that we have a lot of enthusiasm here. There was a group that, with a steering committee, that did a significant amount of legwork, and so I want to select some of those members. And I didn't realize that Angel Acosta was in District Four. I thought he was in District Five, because he was on the steering committee, so I'll recommend him. And then Ryan Hansen, Meg Linkford, Joy Merrilies, with the alternate as Greg Pennella. And then District Four, Flamon McLeod Jr. And Supervisor Green and I conferred.
Yeah. So the applications are incorrect as far as the districts that they reside in?
Only as to Mr. Acosta. No, there were two errors, I noted.
Yeah, there were two errors.
Yeah, there were a couple errors. But basically, because the Lakeport Area Plan map is what Big Valley Advisory Council adopted as its sphere. That does span both District Four, District Five. So Supervisor Pyska and I did discuss this, and there's rough parity between the districts as far as the seats, and then as far as the interests and abilities and skill sets of the people there, and the tribal representation with the Big Valley Rancheria Chair, tribal chair also included on there, Mr. McLeod. I think this is a really good set of appointments. And as Supervisor Pyska said, it's an embarrassment of riches. Certainly no disrespect intended to those people. We're not going to appoint today. But plenty of other opportunities for input on our local area plans and other community issues. So gotta start somewhere, and I concur with Supervisor Pyska as far as the recommendations.
And I just want to say that whoever is appointed, we appoint the members, but it's equally important for the community to show up and participate. And so while we have all of these members who are interested in serving, I just encourage them all to show up and be participants, because it's really hard to have a town hall without the hall. So I feel really confident that they will. And, you know, that participation is just so critical, especially when you have, you take a vote, and everybody there votes. It's not just a vote from the board or the panel. So that participation is really important.
Okay. And I really apologize for asking this question. Can you repeat again who the anticipated appointments are?
Yeah, Flamon McLeod Jr., Joy Merrilies, Meg Linkford, Brian Hansen, Angel Acosta, with the alternate of Greg Pennella.
Okay. Any further comments or questions from board members? Okay, let's open it up for public input. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to the board. Oh, please, come on up. I'm sorry.
I'm Marilyn Holden-Reed from Kelseyville. Would you mind saying those names again? Jessica, thank you.
Sure. Flamon McLeod Jr., Joy Merrilies, Meg Linkford, Brian Hansen, Angel Acosta, and Greg Pennella as the alternate.
And as far as the division between four and five, that's one from District Four?
Two.
Two, okay.
It's two and two, with the alternate being from five.
Okay. We have another hand. Please come on up.
So I never saw a full map that shows the streets, and so we can really look at the area and just see who's included and who's not included. And then I don't really understand when it extends onto the rancheria, but part of the rancheria, so I'm not sure how all that works. So will they be voting members? Will some of them, depending on where they work and where the line is? I just hate to see the power of our, you know, native community kind of broken up and stuck here in this planning committee and that planning committee. So I thought Sabrina was gonna be here with a map today. She said next time she came, she'd bring a map with, set over the GIS. I mean, it's important for people to know which area plan.
Yeah, and if you go to the county maps, you go to the county website, and you go to the maps and GIS, and you can click a layer to see where the area plans are.
But I can't get a hard copy. I have to try...
Yeah, you have, you do. Because you have to, if you want to drill in and see parcel by parcel, you're gonna have to do that on the website.
Okay, so I start at the county, and then I go to...
Yeah, and if you want to go up to Community Development, they might be able to walk you through that, but...
I think if you look at the G-PAC, the one we were, G-PAC or whatever we just did, there's a map on there that shows, is it the same area?
She wants to be able to drill down parcel by parcel.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Yeah, because I...
That can show you how to do that upstairs, but everybody that we're appointing today does live within the area.
Okay. All right. And then how does that work? Where the people that live on the rancheria, they're not included, but they can come and vote? I don't understand how all that works. So how is it gonna serve, how's the Big Valley Rancheria gonna be served by this? Is it gonna serve everybody, part of the people? Can anybody from the rancheria come and vote?
Anybody can come to these meetings and participate in these meetings. When people, when there's a consensus vote, you're supposed to live within the planning area. Most, I think, of the reservation is in the planning area.
So the rancheria needs to know who is and who isn't. It would be nice if you could maybe publicize a map. I mean, I can go upstairs and try and get it all sorted out.
Well, there is a representative who's being appointed, who's on the tribal council.
Flamon, okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
And I believe in the GIS, there's a planning area or area planning layer that once turned on, then you can easily zoom in, identify which streets. It's not a big blob. It's a very distinct line to show the difference between the Lakeport Area Plan and the Kelseyville Area Plan, which the Big Valley Advisory Council uses, the Kelseyville Area Plan.
He's got it.
Yeah. You see that check? If you go and see where Layers is on the right-hand side, and you check Planning Area, that'll give you that layer.
And then you can zoom in for the streets. Okay.
Clutch, Joanna.
If I can just add, on behalf of the Speaker and myself, although it is easy to do it, it's not easy. So I appreciate any request for printed materials, because I'm always requesting them. So we're caught in that divide between old-school print all the time and GIS layers, if you're smart enough to go look at Layers. So I'm glad that the younger folks can get there, but I appreciate that not all of us can. But I don't want to leave here without a map. So the previous agenda item, there is a print version of that map. I'll be sure to rip it out of the agenda for you. And then to your, their concern about tribal representation, yes, Mr. McLeod is the tribal chair of Big Valley Rancheria. I do believe the rancheria, although physically located within District Four, the rancheria has interests throughout the entire Big Valley Advisory Council area, including portions of District Four and District Five. So I'm very confident, and I spoke with the chair yesterday, that his appointment to this will yield at least very robust discussion and participation in all the advisory council votes, and hopefully will also encourage other people who are non-voting members to attend these meetings. Because as Supervisor Pyska said, firing up a committee is one thing. Getting other members of the community to show up to meetings and provide input can be a challenge, as it continues to be in my, other parts of my district. So I'm very confident with the representation. We're moving ahead here with the day, knowing that we're also gonna have additional feedback from community members who do attend.
And if I'm correct, there are no more public comments on this item? So I'll bring it back for action.
I move that we appoint Flamon McLeod Jr., Joy Merrilies, Meg Linkford, Brian Hansen, Angel Acosta, and then Greg Pennella as the alternate to the Big Valley Advisory Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. This is our last untimed item, I believe. Consideration to adopt resolution to approve the CalPERS 180-day wait period exception for CalPERS...
Do you wish to also do the Middletown Cemetery?
We just did that first before we did the... Nope, I appreciate reminders, because I am gonna miss something sooner than later. Okay, let's, 7.7. Consideration to adopt resolution to approve the CalPERS 180-day wait period exception for CalPERS retiree, Richard F. Hinchcliffe, in order to hire him as an extra help deputy district attorney senior. And we have our DA, Susan Cronus, with us.
Hello. Oh, I just pushed the wrong button. Okay. Hello, I am here to answer any questions. I just want to say that I hope that the court, the court, sorry, the board approves this, because we really, really need him desperately to do charging. We, our charging attorney is reducing hours, and so we're gonna need Mr. Hinchcliffe right away. He can charge anything, misdemeanors, felonies, very serious cases. And we're getting a lot of charging, and we don't want to have a backlog, which we currently have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments, questions from the board? Okay, let's open it up for public input. Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. And Mr. Hinchcliffe definitely left some large shoes to fill, so seeing him come back definitely leads us to believe that the help will be there to assist you in your needs.
Thank you.
Looking for action.
Without further ado, Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Green.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabate.
Aye. Thank you very much. And with that, that concludes all our open item sessions except for calendars. So let's go ahead and get started. Vice Chair?
Yeah, so I'll start off tomorrow, Agenda Review. I missed last week. Meeting with Admin, Earth, and then the CSA in Spring Valley. So Earth's at Clear Lake Oaks at the Moose Lodge, and then that's at 4:00 PM. CSA Two out in Spring Valley at 7:00. Thursday, I have the EPA Farm, Ranch, and Rural Communities Committee, and then a AAA Advisory Committee, or not Advisory, I'm sorry, Governing Board meeting. Friday, staff meeting about Potter Valley project. Monday, Central Region Town Hall, and then back here Tuesday for the board meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Yep, it's spring break, so I have a short week, or I'm sorry, a light leak this week. Thursday, I have NCO Governing Board meeting. And there's that barbecue at Calpine. Are you...
Thursday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and go to that.
Okay. I haven't gotten in it.
It's in the evening, right? I just got a call yesterday.
Did you? Okay, yeah, I have it on my calendar, but I don't remember any follow-up. Yeah.
I didn't get told there was food, so I just got told I had to talk.
Okay, I'll follow up with Daniel. And then Friday morning, Zona Benefit meeting. And then my Monday meeting with CAO Parker, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Green?
I am planning nothing for the next entire week, and I do not plan to be here for next Tuesday's meeting. I hope you will soldier on in my absence, but I will be splitting time between my boat and other activities out of county. So thank you for carrying on in my absence.
Make sure to clean and dry before bringing it back. Enjoy your time. Supervisor Simon?
Finishing up the board meeting today, whenever that gets completed. And then tonight, I think there's a special meeting by the Middletown Area Town Hall. Now, they're gonna get a response or something for the Gwinoc Valley Project, so you might stop by and see that for a little bit. Other than that, we have anything, LTA's next week, huh? I was thinking it was this week. I got it for the 10th.
I definitely have it on the 10th as well.
Okay, all right. And then, um...
And Jesus has not emailed us to remind us three times.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so, all right. Thursday, I think I will be going to an event at Calpine in the evening. Talk about geothermal, some other stuff, so... Don't know what that event is called at this point. I just know I'm asked to attend. On Friday, have the CAO, check in with CAO in the morning. Last week, I did meet with Ben Rickman and also Sutter, I think it was last Monday, the 25th, about a piece of property right in the middle of town there. So hopefully we can start up some conversations. It seemed like it went well, and we'll have, hopefully, an update here sooner than later. But it was a good meeting. On Saturday, have some other business. And then Sunday, Sunday I do have a commitment for a project that the Middletown Arts Center is doing, for the Water Basket Project with Caliomi, Middletown, and the area and the tribe. So I'm gonna be meeting on a committee meeting on Sunday. And Monday, don't have nothing back here on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Have tomorrow, I have a NACO Health Committee meeting, and also with my CSAC Committee Administration of Justice, preparing basically for the, is it the following week? Or the week after? The Legislative Conference is the week after, the 17th.
Yeah.
Yeah. Basically preparing that committee for our meeting that we'll have during the ledge conference. And as far as Agenda Review, I know we kind of discussed changing the process, since there's so many, I'll just be blunt, latecomers that appear on the agenda, that it feels like it's not much of a review. So we're looking at Thursday via email, and just to kind of do it that way at this moment in time, until we either figure out that that works or provide a different process. So look for that email. Start Thursday with Judges Breakfast. Meeting with Senator McGuire's office later on that morning. Continuing with Lake County Continuum of Care in the evening. And then that Thursday evening, I'll be at Clear Lake City Council meeting, keeping track of what's going on there. And then on Friday, as already discussed by Vice Chair, we'll be having a Lake Pillsbury staff meeting and seeing where we are and what we're doing. Looks like my only thing on Monday is to meet up with our CAO, discuss our agenda and any other things we're working on, and be prepared for our meeting back here on the 9th. And that will be all for our open session. Did I miss anything? All right, so we will be going to closed session. And in our closed session, we have multiple items. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Air Pollution Control Officer. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Community Development Director. 8.3, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Works Water Resources Director. And 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation, Pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9, D2E1, one potential case. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you for joining.